Excellent. Today is May 24th, 2022 of our City Council Work Session calling to order. Just notice to the public that the City Council may vote to go into Executive Session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Shimoni.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan, would you, in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Stand if you can. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilmember Solis, our mission statement, please?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. And we do have a special guest today for our land acknowledgement, our Commissioner Weathersby. Really appreciate you, yeah, coming here and hoping to start off on the right foot. Oh, I'm sorry. I think the mic might be off over... Excellent. Yeah, thank you.
The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their contributed, their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Rose, were you following up with anything? Or, okay, great. Well, thank you so much for coming to the meeting and helping us start off. And with that, we are down to Agenda Item 4, our General Public Participation. Do we have anyone at this time?
Mayor, we do not.
All right, thank you. Then we are down to our City Manager's Report. And welcome back, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, it's very good to be back. And this time around, I'm going to hand it over to our Senior Deputy City Manager Shannon Anderson, who was kind enough to put this report together. So now she has the liberty of presenting to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council Shannon Anderson. I've got a few highlights for you, and then we'll turn it over for the Division Director Updates. So under our Fire Department, hopefully you got to see that NAU Pi Kappa Alpha Fraternity earned $15,000 towards charities within the Fire Department. So very excited about that. We are working on hiring process for Deputy Chief and Battalion Chief positions, as well as there were a few fire-related calls that we pointed out for you in this report at Jiffy Lube, in the Lake Mary Road area, as well as a shed fire in Lower Greenlaw. Hopefully you saw the introduction of our new Human Resources and Risk Management Director Dietrich Sauer. He joined us last week for orientation on May 16th, so he's got a week under his belt. We are really excited to have him with us. So please, if you have a moment, take some time and look at the background that we've included in the report for you as well. It tells you a little bit about Dietrich's previous experience. Under the Police Department, exciting opportunity for patrol. I don't know if I'd call it an exciting opportunity, but maybe just an opportunity. Crystal magic, there was a bowling ball-sized crystal that was stolen, and they were able to respond to that crime, as well as obtain the crystal back. So very, that's the exciting part of it, I guess. Animal Control Officer Marciniak also joined a special event at Cow Ranch. He helped folks in our community understand how to manage chickens and other livestock within our city limits, as well as any other domesticated animals. The Police Department also celebrated National Police Week, so a great opportunity for them to remember their fallen officers, and also for us to appreciate the great service they provide to our community. Colette Truman was appointed as the new Records Lead Worker over at the Police Department. So if you see her, take an opportunity to congratulate her on her new position. And then there's some recognition from the Deputy County Attorney Brian Shea in relation to Detective Jared Watasik and the Fire, excuse me, the Police Department's work in pulling together testimony, as well as evidence for criminal activity for prosecution. There was also recognition for Detective Ryan Forsman, for his recognition with a domestic violence victim in case. Under PROS, Parks, Rec, Open Space, and Events, they are working to prepare our disc golf courses for the World's Masters Tournament that's coming here in 2023 at Thorpe Park and McPherson Park. So we're excited about that opportunity. In Recreation, we've got a couple of things going on. The Summer Feeding Program will begin at Hal Jensen. Chilling in the Pines Tournament just happened at Jay Lively. And we did also have a terrific classical guitarist performance at Josie Montoya for the individuals participating there. Within Public Works, Streets attended the STEM Event at Fort Tathail in order to try and fill their vacant positions. So I know, I believe we've gotten one applicant out of that, so headed in the right direction. We're also have successfully hired the Facility Superintendent Joe Ronnigan. So he'll be joining us on June 13th. Very excited to have that position filled. Under Meetings, you may have seen the Volunteer Cleanup. The first one, as we mentioned, was this last Saturday, May 21st. We have two more opportunities coming on June 4th and June 18th. This last Saturday, we had 10 of our city employees participate for a total of 33 hours. So we're off to a great start with the City Managers Volunteer Challenge. We'll be sending out some additional information about that opportunity for City of Flagstaff employees to donate their time to our community. So that's all I have for you. I'm going to turn it over to Heidi Hansen, and she can cover Economic Vitality, and we'll just kind of do a baton handoff between the divisions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Heidi Hansen, interim Deputy City Manager, and also working still with Economic Vitality with the help of Trace Ward, our Convention Visitors Bureau Director. Greg says I have five minutes. I will tell you that'll be impossible, but I'm going to try my best. We just hired an Airport Communications Manager. If you know anything about the airport, we are sorely understaffed, and Claire Harper has joined us. She used to actually be with the city a while back, did a little stint at the county. We stole her back. It's all fair, right? And I don't know if Claire, if you're on today, but if you want to show your picture, that would be terrific. I think that they'll remember you. If not, no worries. They'll see you. There she is. And we are definitely overwhelming her, so it's, it's great to have her here. Also, working with Claire in the Airport Marketing Plan, we actually have secured all of the contracts for the marketing in the airport, and we are making more money than we've made when we had a third party. And with Claire's help, we will actually even have more revenue coming in for that revenue stream. And then Trace Ward is helping lead the airport on an airport website that you will be seeing very, very soon. If you know anything about us, we actually have been using the City of Flagstaff website solely, and we actually need our own website, so we're working on that. We also have done a bunch of airport inspections. Just want to let you know, we are in compliance. We also dropped the airport masking mandate, so unless CDC or the actual TSA asks us to do anything different, you can actually now come into the airport and fly without your mask. Implements continue to rise. We had over 10,000 employments in April and were looking really, really good in May. Basically, the only reason we didn't beat last year, believe it or not, which was about 11,000, was the fact that we had a flight to, one less flight to Denver than we had wanted, and that was because of a pilot shortage. But we are getting things right back up to where they should be. In Community Investment, we are definitely doing a lot of work in Beautifications, Arts, and Sciences. We have the Coconino Scroll, the art piece that you'll be seeing at the airport that's going under construction in July. We're actually working with the Downtown Connection Center. We're continuing the Flower Program in downtown. We have the Historic South Side Community Garden. We're working on something with Lone Tree. You all asked. We're going to be working on that. And of course, you're going to be seeing the library entry done ADA compliance, starting in July, and then the artwork will follow after. We also have Creative Flagstaff, which is our grant selection group that does all of the arts and science grants. They're actually reviewing 33 applications right now, so those funds are going to go to good use. They will come back and tell you the winners, or the receivers, rather. Park Flag, we are, we actually had a team of one for a while, which was horrible. And Gail Brockman has done this city a big service by keeping it together, and now we are actually hiring the staff back. So we are welcoming Emily Estrada and Erica Day to the Park Flag Team, and then we will have one more starting very shortly. Operations for the kiosks are going well. We're actually getting things updated. We've had numerous accounts in economic development with broadband and fiber inquiries, and I know that the mayor would probably like to hear more about that. But again, that would take me longer than my five minutes. You will be hearing more about that, Mayor. And then we are actually working with the Arizona Commiss Authority on several grants that we're hoping our city will be able to receive. Working on the airport 32-acre parcel, 31.45 to be exact. We hope to have a ground lease in front of you very, very soon. And Jack Fitchett, our Business Attraction Manager, one New Member of the Year for A A E D, which is quite a feat, since he hasn't been with us very long, but he's making a big impression in Arizona. As we go into other highlights, you saw that Dunkin' Donuts opened up near my neck of the woods, which I will tell you is a problem, but I'm willing to take it for the team. And Bolski is actually a new bowling alley that's going to be coming into the mall very, very soon, still working. And then you all saw that Barnes &amp; Noble has relocated to the mall. Huge win for that area of town. We had the Innovate Waste Challenge, where we actually gave over $30,000 away to some recipients. Two, two of them are actually going to be doing some things with restoration. It's Restoration Soils is one of them, where they recycle forest products. And the other one is called Crosswalk Labs, and they do carbon dioxide monitoring. These are pretty cool. Had a STEM Celebration that some of you attended. We also had you attend the Elevate Pre-K. We appreciate your attention to that. And then we go into the library. Our stats are growing. We opened our doors full-time. Yes, stop the emails to council. We are open. And we also had articles in the newspaper about our library seed program, as well as our Family Food Center donations. We actually just installed new tables at the East Flag Community Library, which are now ADA compliant, and we wanted to say thank you to Lucy Walkup. She actually gave that donation, and we appreciate that that was in her, her will. We did an Earth Day Celebration. We are getting ready for the Summer Reading Challenge. We have slew of tutoring going on, and we are actually helping people with resume building, so please send them to our library again. And then going, last but not least, I'm going to blow through tourism, because you're going to hear from them in just a few minutes. Trace is going to tell you about the metrics. I'm not going to steal his thunder. And then also, I wanted to let you know, Marketing Media Relations did 29 print articles and 117 digital articles in the month of April. They actually, we had AOT, Debbie Johnson, who is a huge help and supporter, the Arizona Office Tourism Director, talk about us and fire safety. Yes, they're talking the talk, and they're walking the walk, and she was on some of the major networks last, in April, on this. So we, we are really supportive of her. She's supportive of us. I want to talk about this one nighting, but I'm still not going to steal Trace's thunder, so I'm not going to tell you about it. He will. We also had slew of articles done about us. 50 Amazing Places in the U.S. You've Got to Take Your Kids. We were one of them. 25 Ultimate Things to Do in Arizona. We were one of them. And the list goes on. Best Start Gazing Spots Across the USA. Of course, it was us. And then we have our website analytical, analytics that are continuing to grow with our top-performing pages. Where our webcam, don't forget, it sits on the, on the train station at the Visitor Center. And we had an email campaign. We had sweepstakes. Our social media is just blowing up. It's just great, in a good way. And then, of course, our Creative Services. We can't do anything without Ralph Schmidt, our Creative Services Manager, who's in this room, and his amazing team, and the work that they do to make all of us look buttoned up. So I appreciate that. And last but not least, Visitor Services did a Flagstaff Train Day. Yes, events are back, and they had much success with that. They also are giving out Brewery Trail brochure, you know, the passes and the pint glasses, and 245 of those went out, out of our Visitor Center this last month. So I can tell you, people are out and about. And I'm going to leave it at that, except for one last thing. Our City of Flagstaff Recruitment Campaign is doing very well. We are branding, branding our program. We're letting people know that, we know that you love Flagstaff. We love Flagstaff. We're actually getting some people to actually go and look at the jobs and, and more. So I can't thank you enough. And the big thing that you've seen on this screen over and over again is our help to fire on fire awareness. We're very proud of that. Any questions? No worries. Happens to us all, doesn't it not? Any questions? All right. Think we're good? All right. Appreciate you listening.
My apologies.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm following Heidi, so I'm going to be briefer, I promise. I T. My name is Paul Santana, the Deputy I T Director. I'm here today to talk about our I T Division Monthly Report, which is included in your agenda packet for this afternoon. We always include a tech tip. This month's tech tip is Outlook-related, was submitted by our Applications Manager, Sean Armour. It covers the Find Related option, and it can definitely save you time when you're trying to locate an email. So we hope that everyone has a chance to give that a read. Each month, we also like to highlight a team member who embodies our I T Division Mission Statement, which is to provide these secure tools to make your job easier tomorrow than it was today. Our Staff Spotlight for this month is Dale Williams. He's actually featured on our Making Flagstaff Thrive advertising slogan through Creative Services here. He's our I T Help Desk Technician. Although Dale's only been with the city for just under a year now, in that time, he's done a great job of maintaining the Help Desk's focus on quality customer service and the resolution of all city's technical problems. Dale's often the first person you see when you come up and stop by the Help Desk. He sits right there in front at the main desk. He's always willing to listen, and he works hard to resolve our employees' computer, multitude of computer issues.
Is that him on the picture?
That's him in the back with the laptop. Yep, that's Dale. So for the past, past few months, Dale's also been working to support our Police I T Transition Project. He's been working onsite at the LEAF facility, assisting with the support of Police M D C devices, and helping to move our P D Support Project ahead. So his flexibility, willingness to help whenever the need arrives, arises is a great example of our mission statement in action. The rest of our report has some, some great updates on several of the other projects that our division's been working on, including a quarterly broadband meeting that Heidi mentioned, some upcoming federal grant opportunities for fiber funding, more detailed information on our very complex P D I T Support Project that we're in the midst of, as well as some detailed updates from each of our I T programs on what they're currently working on. So we hope that you're all able to give them a read. But that's all I have for today. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Santana. I'm not seeing any questions.
Great. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, Members of Council. Trevor Henry with the Capitol Improvement Section. So to this afternoon, I'm pinch hitting for Rick Barrett, who normally gives the, the monthly update. So I hope to do a good job, just like Rick would do. So I just wanted to start about the month of report, and I think you have that in your packet, so I'm just going to kind of follow along in that fashion. 24 pages. I hope to be brief. So the, the first one is the Pilot Project, which is the Separated Bike Lanes. That was a special request project from Council last July, and we went ahead and got that completed by December. But some updated information that we have for you this afternoon is traffic data has been collected. Recently, two completed phases of that pilot project. The data that was collected was before and after speeds and vehicle and bike volumes. Staff has reached out to stakeholders, the Police Department, the School District, and Mountain Line, the bus, public transportation, about the project and their input. Also, a survey will be issued for all roadway users on their experiences with the first two phases that were completed. All the collected data and comments will be compiled into a report, and that will be presented to the Traffic Commission on June 1st, the Bicycle Advisory Committee on June 2nd, and the Pedestrian Advisory Committee on June 9th. All of that information will be then presented to Council on June 14th. So that is the Pilot Project, Separated Bike Lanes. Spruce Wash Cedar to Dorthea is part of the museum flood, and that has been under construction for about a month and a half. And right now, we're wrapping up the franchise utility, which is gas, electric, and TV. We're working on the Concrete Box Culvert at Dorthea with excavation and setting of the concrete forms. Due to concrete supply restrictions, there has been some talk about doing some work outside of normal work hours, and that's all based on availability of concrete. So our team is working hard to ensure that doesn't happen all the time, but as frequent as possible. So that is some great teamwork that is going on. Any type of, anytime there's work outside of normal work hours, our team is notifying the neighborhood and just making sure they understand what's happening. So that's some great communication that's happening there. The La Plaza Vieja Traffic Calming Project is just getting wrapped up. That is some traffic calming improvements along Clay Avenue from Blackbird Roost to Florence Avenue and Malpie Lane. And that is basically completed. Our next step is closeout and final acceptance. Beulah University Realignment. This project, we've talked about in the past, and I'm pretty sure we're going to be talking about it in the future. But as we move forward with that, our team is incorporating comments from stakeholders that they've received. The stakeholders are ADOT and Mountain Line as we move forward. So we're also expecting a construction-ready plan set by the end of June, so we're working on that as we move forward. Property acquisition continues for legal descriptions and appraisals for all the properties that are adjacent to the project. And everybody knows that cost is escalating, and we all know that, and that's been happening in the industry for several, for at least two years since COVID has hit. But what we're doing is we're trying to get our team together to put together a value engineering workshop to actually look at some of the cost savings that we can implement with this project. So everything that we're doing now, and as we go forward, will be part of that workshop that we want to try to get some value engineering that we would like to present. So we would also like to do that before we present to you a G M P, which is the Guaranteed Maximum Price. Also, we've talked with our C Mar, who was our Construction Manager at Risk, and they have evaluated construction, and they would like to see an early spring start in order to make this a successful project in two seasons. So that is our update there on Beulah University. Downtown Mile. This is a combination of several projects along the corridor, in the railroad, in the downtown area, about a mile. It's multi-funded by several of our projects within the city, with Metro Plan and with B N S F. And we're also seeking grants at the moment. An update we have for you is R S O Qs were received for the design, which also included the B N S F mitigation measures. The city and B N S F and the consultant met at the end of April in about a six-hour workshop to go over a grant application, because we want this to be as tight as possible and make our chances better at an award for a grant. The Rio de Flag, I think we've all heard about that, too, and that's been going on for a while. At the end, at the first part of May, we did receive a construction and maintenance agreement from B N S F. That was a draft that we are currently reviewing and working on. The Army Corps, the city, and B N S F continue to talk about schedule, talk about acquisitions, and just how the project is going to go through B N S F Railway right away. Information is being collected from the local franchise utilities, just to ensure our design is up to date as we move forward. Lone Tree Overpass. We continue to meet with the Army Corps and B N S F to coordinate the design, because everything that is within Lone Tree kind of blends itself into the Rio and vice versa. So we're just making sure we're coordinating that effort. The team has been talking with ADOT regarding traffic modeling along Route 66, so that's occurring. And later tonight, you'll hear a presentation on the Economic Impact Study and the Eldon Loop Road, that scenario there. So that should be forthcoming tonight. Also, this afternoon, the team presented to the Commission on Inclusion and Adaptive Living, and that was successful and met with a lot of great comments. So well done to our team for doing that. There is also some Water Services Aging Infrastructure Projects that we're working on. The East Route 66, this is out past the mall. We're putting in a new water line, which will help the distribution in that area, and that's just started. That's about halfway through. We're expecting completion later this fall. We also have the Huntington Waterline Project, which is basically wrapped up, and that's just replacing existing facilities. We have the Lake Mary Flocculation and Sediment Basin, and that is infrastructure out at Lake Mary, the plant there, which is over 60 years old. And this project will improve with the new facilities, that plant. And so we're hoping to advertise later this fall with a spring start of next year. And lastly, is the Lockitforth Roundabout. Again, another project that we've talked about, and we will continue to talk about as we go forward until we are successful in delivering this project. So last month, we had an amendment to the I G A, which was approved. We did hear last week the first read of the ordinance for the property acquisition, and we will continue the second read, I think, the first meeting in June. And staff will be before you next week, May 31st, to go over additional details related to this project. And so that is what I have for an update, and I hope I was... Five minutes, maybe not.
Thank you much.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think there was a question from Councilmember Shimoni.
Councilmember Shimoni. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And Trevor, don't leave so quick. Thank you for filling in, Trevor, and you did a great job, and I'm pretty sure that was under five minutes. I was counting. Just kidding. But just a couple of quick questions, Trevor. So with the Beulah, I was a little confused in the report. It said expected to begin in early July this year, but then it said also, like, you know, construction's expected to begin early July. And then it also says that construction is scheduled for now anticipated early spring.
So in what we have there, Councilmember Shimoni, what we have is in June, the end, the, the end of June is when we should have a construction-ready plan set. And I'm looking for that page right now. Probably got to put on my glasses. So we are doing a construction, construction-ready plans by the mid to late June. So that's what we're working on right now, is a construction-ready plan set or a complete design by the end of June. And then what we did is we talked with our C Mar, and to get a better handle on construction and how we can be successful, and what they've recommended is an early spring start. So if we were to start now, we may not be successful with a two-season project. So we want to do all these measures upfront, property acquisition, get that ready to go, work on the plans, and do our value engineering workshop to get a handle on the cost, to identify and, and look at items within the project that we can reduce costs. So all of that...
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
And with all of that in mind, all of that on the table, is what we're, we're looking at right now.
Okay, thank you for that. I was, I was under the impression I was coming back to Council, I believe sooner than later, to discuss, given that it was, you know, projected $9 million over budget. And I hear that, you know, you're going to go back with the team and work on that cost-saving workshop. But, you know, if it's anywhere near $9 million, Council, I'd like... council, I'd love for us to be able to talk about that. You know, that's almost double the price. And by the end of the job, it might definitely be double the price. Is that possible, Trevor?
So Councilmember Shimoney, the last time we were before you, we did talk about the cost increase as it continually went up. So staff, in the meantime, this was an idea, a plan that we wanted to explore and then implement, is just having these measures with our C Mar, having a talk with them, because they're the expert on how to build this project. And then just get staff input, make sure our right-of-ways is where it needs to be, and just make sure we're looking at cost and doing value engineering to reduce those costs, to get a handle on everything that's been increasing.
Okay, so you're not projecting it to be like double the cost or even one and a half times? You're thinking it's going to come in closer to cost?
I can't. If I was able to project the future, I probably wouldn't be working here. But I, I'm pretty confident in our C Mar, and I'm confident in our staff and what we can do. And with everything, with the measures that we have and with the techniques and with the education, the certification, everything that we have, I'm pretty confident we can get closer to our target project, which is our budget. I'm confident in that.
Okay, you know, this is news to me and city manager. Obviously, you and I have talked a lot about this, and that council should weigh in if it does come in over budget at a certain amount. So I'll leave it to your discretion, but that's great news. And then lastly, I'll just make a quick comment. I do have concerns about just the Lone Tree Butler conversation, when that does occur in a few weeks here. In regards to the number of lanes, my understanding is that the five-lane option is modeling to be pretty bad and that our code is going to prevent us from allowing for it. And it just makes it a non-starter. So that's just a little disappointing, and I just wanted to share that. And I doubt there's anything we can do at this point, Trevor, but it'd be great if the finally five-lane option at least had a chance at, you know, being successful through our modeling. But thank you, Mayor, council, and Trevor. Well done tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Dan Folk. I'm the Community Development Director. So I'll provide some highlights of our monthly report. That's in your packet for you and all the thousands of people that I know are listening out in virtual land. So a little update on current planning. You're very well aware of the agenda we had last week. I think we had 14 items from community development. It included an approval for restoration soils, which is a new business coming to the east side of Flagstaff that needed a regional plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a variance. The council approved a plat for Woodshire on Oak, which I think is a really interesting example of what we would call missing middle infill. So this is definitely an infill. What was a business, and now it's going to be a number of units, I think in the 12 to 14 range, if I recall. You approved a plat at Timber Sky, and then the A R C Flagstaff Annexation Zoning Map Amendment and DA. So that's for the Flagstaff Rehabilitation Center. We've hired a new zoning code manager, Tiffany Antal, which we're really pleased to have her in that position. And so she's jumping right in. We've been working on a major code amendment to our lighting code, and this is really an outcome of the light pollution study that the Naval Observatory did a number of years ago. So that's getting very close to coming to the council. We're going to start public participation over the summer, and you'll see that after the break. There's also a work session next week for potential amendments on recreational marijuana. We had an application from a local business to change the hours of operation. So you'll have a work session on that next week, as well as considering the social equity licenses. Moving on to comprehensive and long-range planning, the team is very focused on the regional plan update. This is our multi-year project. We're into year two. We've got a link in the report to a regional plan visioning survey, so we encourage everyone to continue to take that survey. Sarah and her team have been visiting all of the boards and commissions and doing a SWOT analysis, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And that's going to continue this week. I think they have two more commissions this week. I want to mention a Heritage Preservation Commission meeting that was held in May, on May 18th. I think a really interesting piece of Flagstaff history I'd never heard about. Mae Hicks, who developed the first Arizona state flag, lived in Flagstaff. She was a very prominent resident. I'm told that original state flag is in the state Capitol. So she was kind of the Betsy Ross of Arizona, if you want. She was also an assistant postmaster in Flagstaff in 1906, which I think was probably groundbreaking at that time. So that information on Mae Hicks was presented as in part of a demolition. So there is going to be an infill project, but there will be mitigation. So I'd think some recognition of Mae Hicks on the site. I'm guessing it'll be the mitigation, probably a plaque with information about her and her impact on Flagstaff. All right. We also have our Property Care Ordinance Working Group. We've rebranded the PMO, Property Maintenance Ordinance. We're calling it a Property Care Ordinance. And we've got six meetings scheduled. We did our first meeting on May 12th. These are working groups. The next meeting is this Thursday, the 26th. I have to correct the time. We had to move it. In the report, it says 5 to 7. It's actually going to be 1 to 3 this Thursday. And that's because we have some La Plaza Vieja meetings in the evening. So Thursday evening, we have a neighborhood meeting for the La Plaza Vieja character overlay. So notices have gone out to many of the residents in La Plaza Vieja. So there's one on Thursday at 6:30 at our Lady of Guadalupe Church in the basement, and then another one on Friday, the 27th, at 10 a.m. And the character overlay is the work of design guidelines for a specific portion of La Plaza Vieja. And that was an outcome of the neighborhood plan. So we encourage everyone to attend those meetings. Real estate is working on a lot of acquisitions for a lot of the projects that Trevor was just talking about. I won't name them all. I will mention the Spruce Wash Dortha, which is under construction. Very important, a flood mitigation project. And then we've got a building safety and code compliance report. I would say this is where our biggest challenge is right now, in staffing. We had three openings at the beginning of May in our building inspection group, so seven inspectors, three vacancies, a retirement, a relocation, and resignation to do something else. So a little bit of everything. We filled one of them, that position, I believe they're starting in June, but we've still got two openings, and we have an opening in plan review. But you can see, we're still very busy. Our numbers compared to last year are a little down. We still issued almost 600 permits in April. I won't go over the code compliance report, but let me know if you have any questions on that. And then finally, we've attached the housing newsletter, which comes out every other month. So much to talk about in that newsletter. April was Fair Housing Month. As part of that, we did some training here in this room back on April 13th with some training on fair housing law. We've got updates in the newsletter on a couple of partnerships we're doing, one with Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona and one with Habitat for Humanity. We just got the license back today from Habitat for the starter homes on the O'Leary lot that the city owns. So that's going to be routed up to Greg next, and hopefully, they're going to be breaking ground on that starter home project very soon. And then we also mentioned the Cortland Lofts, which is a project the council approved. At the end of Cortland, 139 units, 10% of those will be affordable, so 14 units targeted for 80% AMI, or Area Median Income, for 30 years. And then lastly, we have a new housing commissioner that's featured in here, Jackie Kellogg. We also have several openings. So anybody who's interested in serving on the housing commission, you can find information in our newsletter on how to do that. And I'm available for any questions?
Thank you.
That's my report.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes, please go ahead.
I'm going to put Mr. Folk and his team on the spot here because his team with building inspections saved the night, Saturday night, for one hotel and 200 of their guests. So the situation, I got a call like at 7 o'clock in the evening, and I immediately called Acting City Manager, Ms. Shannon Anderson, because of course, emergency happens on a Saturday night when the boilers broke. And they had, the hotel owner had it fixed, but it needed the city's building inspection official to inspect it and approve it to be able to turn back the gas on for heated, for water, hot water. So within 30 minutes, one of our building inspector, Lloyd-
Lloyd Drinkard.
Lloyd Drinkard, of course, was orchestrated by Mr. Folk and Ms. Amy Palmer-Hagan, our building official. And the water, hot water, was turned back on for the nightly showers of their guests. So thank you so much. Only Tim Flagstaff can pull that off within 30 minutes responding to such a call.
Thank you for that recognition. Yeah, that is one of the things we do, our emergency inspections. Gas lines have to be pressure-tested before they turn it back on. So thank you for that recognition, council member. And thank you to Lloyd.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. And Dan, thank you for the report. I enjoyed reading it, as I do with every report. Quick, just want to give kudos to the team for the work done to translate the online applications to Spanish. I just think that's a big deal, and I just want to express appreciation for that specifically. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm Lisa Dean with Water Services with an update for you. Well, the latest news in Water Services is our interim director, Annie Birdelson, as you probably know, is leaving us and moving over to the county. The good news is our dear Brad Hill is returning as our interim director for a few months, and we're very happy to see him return. He'll bring a lot of expertise with him. Our operations section head position has been open since January, when Mark Richardson left. And that position is going to be split between facilities and distribution collections. And Jim Hukel will take responsibility, facility operations. And Patrick O'Connor will manage the distribution and collections, which is the pipes in the ground. We do have two employees that you'll hear more about that have over 20 years of service. We're very proud of that. You'll hear about that in our recognition. The Water Commission, last week, their agenda, they were talking about spruce wash. They're looking at an overlay for the administrative flood plain in the spruce wash area. It's just to help for future planning in that area since the museum fire. There's also a lot of work being done in stormwater, as you know. It's a multi-agency effort with an incident management team getting ready for flood preparedness. We are being awarded a grant from the Department of Forestry to purchase a 12-yard combination truck and a mini excavator to prepare for the season, our summer flood season. The, we're still looking at choices on fixes for our wastewater treatment plants. I don't know that we have it perfect yet. There's a lot of options, and those options were presented to the Water Commission on Thursday night. The diversion project was not feasible, that was suggested by our consultant. So we're looking at other options. And we're hoping to find a short-term fix that's going to have some good long-term implications. That would be the most ideal. Be on the lookout. Regulatory Compliance is releasing the annual water quality report here in a few weeks. So that will be coming. That's going to the printer now. The SCADA IS team is actually receiving an award from City Works Trimble, but the software company that does the software for all of our asset management. Our team is getting an award from them for our planning and management practices and our implementation methods. The stormwater rate assessment is underway. So we're looking at reassigned, looking at our rates aligned to our needs. As you, I'm sure you're hearing about all the flood cleanup and volunteer efforts that were, that's being coordinated in spruce wash and other watersheds. We're also actively looking for as much federal and different grant funding as we can find, as we can put together and apply for. Water production is doing a lot of spring projects, spring cleanups. They cleaned out the interchange clearwell. It had sand in it to do the PFOS and regulatory compliance sampling. That's something that's done on a regular basis. They're putting in new flow meters at Woody Mountain Wells and trenching for fiber. So this is our connectivity assets. One of the El Paso project, we're also paying and having fiber installed. And that'll bring fiber up to our Wildcat Hill plant, and that's going to give us a lot more capability and communications. It's going to improve our communications for our SCADA. The Lake Mary Backwash Tower project is moving forward. It's going to be repainting the inside of the tanks. These are just maintenance items. And we're meeting with an inspection condition assessment company to look at our raw water pipeline. It's a pipeline that goes from Lake Mary to the plant, and it needs to be rehabbed in some way. So we're not sure of the best approach, so we're having a condition assessment done on that. Water Resources is reviewing proposals on our RFP for a rate advisor. So this is taking a look at our policies and criterias that we want captured in the rate study, when we move on to the rate study. Erin Young is working on a drought resiliency grant based in aquifer recharge and recovery. We might be also doing one at Lake Mary as well. And it's May, water enforcement has started. The conservation, the watering regulations are in effect, and our people are back out. Do I have any questions?
I'm not seeing any at this time. Thank you much.
So the last presentation we have for you this afternoon, council, is the work anniversaries for May. So I'm going to pull that document up real quick that way we can share with you all the lovely faces of our terrific employees. Deputy City Clerk, former. Amazing, thank you. All right. So here we go. Our May work anniversaries. For our five-year anniversaries, we had Officer Jordan, as well as Officer Christopher, both celebrating five years with our Flagstaff Police Department. Our 15-year anniversary, Molly Sadler. She's one of our library supervisors. Our 20-year anniversaries, we have Rick Denonis. He's our building inspection manager, works with Amy Palmer, our building official you heard about a little earlier today. For 20 years, we have Tommy Bustamante. He was hired as one of our Flagstaff Fire Department firefighters back in 1998. He's been with our organization for 24 years. He's been on the arson investigation program for more than 14 years early in his career. He's been managing the commodity program for 16 years. And this really keeps our station stocked with everyday essential items. And so we really appreciate Tommy and his efforts in keeping our fire department moving forward. One of the things that they shared about Tommy is that he greets you with a big smile, and they're blessed to have him be part of their fire family. So congratulations, Tommy, on his 24-year work anniversary. He is off duty today, so will not be joining us. Marion Lee, she's been with us for 27 years. She is certainly a familiar face in Water Services. Many of you probably know her. She was hired in customer service and has been part of the team ever since. She states that water is her business, and the people I work with are why she's still here at the City of Flagstaff. So we appreciate Marion dedicating those 27 years to our organization. Mr. Bill Case, and Marion's on vacation, so that's why she's not with us today. Bill Case, he started with our city in 1993, and he's been at the Rio de Flag Water Reclamation Plant. If you've been there, it's a fascinating place. It's where I learned about bugs and how important they are to the process. He's been there as a plant operator at Rio de Flag, as well as Wildcat Hill. And he knows both processes really well. He's been with us for 29 years. So we're very appreciative of everything Bill has done in Water Services to keep those plants running. And lastly, Grant Kelly. He is a sergeant with our Flagstaff Police Department. He began with us in May of 95. He attended his academy- He attended his academy in Tucson and then worked in patrol with a few, we call them sabbaticals, or, you know, just being able to lead patrol, to work in the criminal investigation section. He has served as one of our field training officers, which is incredibly important, given the number of new officers that we hire through our police department. And then they were, he was also instrumental with our supervisors' training as well. He promoted to sergeant in two thousand and twelve and is known for his excellent work ethic and extremely passionate about community policing. He was one of our officers that served in the Sunnyside Neighborhood Area. He was that area sergeant. He's a certified bomb technician, and he has been a team leader on that team for years. He has spent many nights and weekends working as a bomb technician and responded whenever there was a need to handle any suspicious items. Throughout his twenty-seven years with us, he's offered a helping hand to patrol, as well as our detective teams. He's a past recipient of a life-saving award, the City Managers Excellence Award, and the Officer of the Year Award. He has definitely come out, even when there are situations such as officer-involved shootings, homicides, and other critical incidents. His file, they share, is full of commendations for outstanding customer service, conducting good investigations, ending a carjacking, which you all heard about most recently in a city manager's report, and apprehending an armed and dangerous burglary suspect. So, that's what we have for you today for our work anniversaries. We'll be back before you in June.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
We're going to have a little impromptu presentation by Sterling to talk about his team.
Has this been agendized, Sterling, appropriately?
It fits, it fits squarely within the city manager's report and recognition of employees, so.
I tease.
It's, it's within the scope.
I can request an executive session if you'd like to talk more about it.
No, thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let you know, I'm, it's with pride and sadness that I, it sounds like a book title, Pride and Sadness, true pride in Brent Harris and sadness that he's leaving us. Our city prosecutor was appointed to the bench, Superior Court Judge, Division Six, and his last day will be June seventh. So, it's always great when you have one of your own team, as a, as a city attorney's office, be appointed to serve as a judge. At the same time, it's going to be a huge hole that we have to fill, and I really appreciate Brent and all that he's done for our team. Literally, some very big shoes to fill. And I just wanted to give him that recognition and thank him for all of his service. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. All right. Anything else to add, city manager?
No, Mayor and Council. Thank you, and thanks for giving us your time and audience for all these great presentations.
They were. I mean, this is so important, and people know, I mean, how much you all work with so little staffing to accomplish so much, just continues to amaze me. So, I really appreciate these reports every month. They, they're important for everyone to know. All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Six, which is our Indigenous Commission update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you that we're able to present a report to you, and our commissioners are the ones who are going to do this tonight. First, I want to introduce myself. My name is Rose Tohi, and I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. My clans's are T'chitni Nahtai, that's who my mom is. My dad is K'nta Chitni. My maternal grandfather is Ashiha, which is Salt Clan, and then my paternal grandfather is Hashka Hatzahai. That's who I am as a person. And I just want to, the commissioners will introduce themselves to you, but first, we'd like to see if we can have you come down. We have a small honoring of cultural tea from our commissioners to you, and it's just an honor to present that to our leadership. So, I want to just do that, and they also request a picture.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, and Flagstaff residents for joining us today as we share our annual report for the Indigenous Commission. My name is Kiara Weathersby, and I'll share my traditional introduction with you this eve, evening. Ya'te, she'e tet nizantni nishle, adona hithli chikasaa chopto Mississippi dant de kayigi boshachin, tet chitni deshche adona hithli Cherokee Louisiana dant de kayigi dashanale. Kiara Weathersby nishay, she'e kentlanet dant nishan. She'e, Northern Arizona University Office of Indigenous Student Success, manager, student development nishle. Shahastin e Raphael woye, Pete Springs dant na'ga, sh'a'alchene e tatla e alaja nahak gahigi e sheche e Carolina woye, shima e Janice Weathersby woye, twaninest e jadeke at e, ado sheje e Carl Weathersby woye, no dant Mississippi de ke at e net dant. Shimasani e Sally Spencer woye, t'abiken de ke at e, do sheche e Mark Spencer woye net dant, twaninest e jadeke at e net dant. She'e ta'chil bi yezilko dona deh na'ki ko yolkalgo kentlana shet deshche. She'e dene baza bichos a achuttego dene asan nishle, a'kya hat. I'm enrolled member of the Navajo Nation and was born and raised here in Flagstaff when Flagstaff Medical Center was on the west side of Beaver. I introduced myself in the Navajo language, as we are matrilineal people, and this helps us identify ourselves with relatives and our relationships to one another. I currently serve as a commissioner, as well as a student development court manager in the Office of Indigenous Student Success at Northern Arizona University. And I'm here with Commissioners Meg Kabodi Adicay and Fawn Toya, as well as staff member Rose Tohi, and I will let them introduce themselves.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Meg Kabodi Adicay, and I am a member of the Hopi Tribe. My dad was from the village of S'ngopavi, and then my mom was a Bahana, Billy Ghana, white person. So, my dad's clan was Snow Clan, and so sometimes people say, "What is your clan?" And I say, "It's Snow Clan," but then other times, I'm like, "Well, I'm, I'm White Person Clan," because it's matrilineal also. So, anyway, both work. I've lived in Flagstaff my whole life, and I currently manage Flagstaff Community Markets, which do the farmer's market, the flea market, and the downtown community market. I also teach extracurricular activities at Kinlani Border Town Dormitory. I kind of do the Flagstaff hustle. I teach kindergarten at Pine Forest. I'm like trying to tick off my jobs, and I've, I've worked at the hospital, I've worked at Museum of Northern Arizona, a lot of great organizations in the past, and what else? I serve on this commission. I serve on the ICF, also the Commission for the County, Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council, and Flagstaff Food Link. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Flagstaff City Council. My name is Fawn Laney Toya. I am Hopi, Hamas, and Zia Pueblo. I am a Flagstaff City resident of four years. I currently work as a case manager with Supportive Services for Native Americans for Community Action. I am also the Vice President of the Indigenous City Circs, excuse me, Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff. I also am a Coconino County Health Disparities Grants Resource Navigator, and also really have been re-elected as your Indigenous Commissioner of Flagstaff, and I would like to thank you for that nomination, as my term will expire on December of two thousand and twenty-four. And I am from the village of Kikotsmovi, Badger Clan, and I have three children who live also on Hopi Reservation. I also grew up on the Hopi Reservation, and I am glad to be here and serve the community of Flagstaff and all peoples. Thank you.
So, we want to begin with the ordinance two zero two zero dash two four, which establishes a new chapter of the Indigenous Commission in October of two thousand and twenty. The Indigenous Commission has seven voting members and three ex-official members of the Indigenous Peoples Advisory Council. We all reside within the Flagstaff City limits and are enrolled members of tribal nations. City Council appointed us on December first, two thousand and twenty, in connection to the PBB Key Community Priorities, Objectives, and Regional Plan, inclusive and engaged community to foster community pride and civic engagement by increasing opportunities for public involvement, in line with best practices and legal requirements, as well as to enhance community involvement, education, and regional partnerships to strengthen the level of public trust. And here are the current voting commissioners, ex-official commissioners, and liaisons for the Indigenous Commission. Next to the voting commissioners in parentheses are when their appointments expire in December, in December of that year.
Through the Flagstaff Community Forums in two thousand and six and two thousand and seventeen, key recommendations were presented and accepted in October of two thousand and seventeen by City Council. While they are listed here, the list is not in order of priority. The recommendations are all essential. We want to make sure that we're thinking about these as starting points of how the Indigenous Commission can be informed so that we can advise the City Council. As you can see, there's visibility, economic inclusion, and impact, the Indigenous Community Cultural Center, education, wellness, housing, and transportation. In March of two thousand and twenty, public safety and criminal justice was added to the recommendations. Again, this is not an exhaustive list, but a starting point.
Meeting overview. Today, we will review what the Indigenous Commission covered in the four quarters in two thousand and twenty-one and the two quarters in two thousand and twenty-two. We advise the Council on certain situations, and knowledgeable community members are invited to provide the correct knowledge. This way, the Commission can make informed recommendations and advise City Council. We can also share accurate information with community members. We learned from the following partners and presentations listed. Here you can see the picture of the Indigenous Commission brainstorming at our retreat in July of two thousand and twenty-one.
In January through March, the Indigenous Commission was established in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, and we had our introductory meeting where we connected and shared our introductions and our languages. As you heard earlier, it takes a while to establish kinship and relationality with one another. Relations are established by sharing who we are, the nations and communities we come from, and our relationship to one another via maternal and paternal lineage. We also discussed the work plan that was assigned to the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives and guides the Indigenous Commission. And the overview let the Indigenous Commission see how we could support those key recommendations. Then we had the selection of our chair and our co-chair, and as a new commission, we learned about quorum and meetings and all the fun things that go along with it.
Next is April through June. In the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-one, the Commission had an informative presentation from the Climate Energy Specialists from the Sustainability Division on Climate Action and Carbon Neutrality at the City of Flagstaff that correlates with wellness. We also had a presentation from the Comprehensive and Neighborhood Planning Manager on the Indigenous American, indeed, Alaskan native population trends in the City of Flagstaff. The presentation correlates with the economic inclusion and impact of Indigenous residents. Population trends may guide future conversations regarding visibility, housing, and transportation recommendations. We started with a conversation on land acknowledgement that connects with visibility, and we were looking at how we could provide that to the City of Flagstaff as an opportunity to share that relationality here within the city.
Quarter three. Next is July through September of the third quarter in two thousand and twenty-one. We had our Indigenous Commission retreat. That is the first and only meeting our Indigenous Commission has had in person. The remainder of our meetings and presentations from the community has been over teams. We facilitated the conversation around our mission and vision of the Commission. We had a working session on the land acknowledgement, which correlates with visibility. Additionally, we had an update on the alternate response model. Also, we spoke about the acronym shown, Extrajudicial Providers Offering Connected Healing as an option for the mobile unit. We considered colors and symbols that may be associated with the mobile unit. These conversations correlated with wellness, public safety, and criminal justice. Then we finalized our version and submitted that first version of the land acknowledgement to the city manager and council for consideration that occurred in August of two thousand and twenty-one, which correlates with visibility.
So, this next slide is October through December in quarter four, where the Commission met with city attorney to discuss the land acknowledgement submitted to City Council and City Manager for consideration. And our conversation was to try to stay as close to the original version as possible. As advisors to the City Council, we sought to keep the intentionality with the land acknowledgement. And through that conversation with city attorney Sterling Solomon, the Commission voted on slight revisions and then resent that land acknowledgement to the City Council for approval, which happened in October of two thousand and twenty-one. And in November, the City Council unanimously approved the Indigenous Commission's revision, and we're thankful and pleased that we got to share that with you all and that that is now part of your meetings. And the inaugural reading did occur in Native American Heritage Month, and so that also correlates with visibility. We also had a present, presentation from COTA, the Commission on Diversity Awareness, and they shared their support for the proposed renaming of the Peaks, and so we listened to what COTA shared about potential partnerships, which correlates with visibility and education.
From January through March, the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-two, we talked about the alternative response model, mobile unit. We were notified that the City Council approved the Taros Health Incorporated contract. The contract is for the van to transport firefighters and EMTs and behavioral health techs and specialists in outreach efforts with specialized equipment. We also had a conversation about the acronym for the mobile unit. The Commission worked with one another to develop the acronym CARE, the Community Alliance Response and Engagement Unit. This correlates with wellness, public safety, and criminal justice for our relatives experiencing houselessness. We also had a conversation with Southwest Decision Resources Incorporated. We also had a conversation with Southwest Decision Resources Incorporated. They presented on services they provide to the City of Flagstaff about the Thorpe Park Annex. The Indigenous Commission is identified as a stakeholder concerning the Thorpe Park Annex parcel. The SDR presentation connects with the Indigenous Community Cultural Center's proposed location. Finally, in the first quarter of March, we also had new commissioners appointed to the Commission as the one-year appointments expired in January. And in April uh, through May of the second quarter of 2022, we talked about a refurbished building in Telluride that serves as a national historic landmark. The presentation was a way to introduce the Commission to possibilities as it correlates with the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. Commissioners also heard from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Judge Slaton provided a presentation and spoke with us about the juvenile, adult, and family issues impacting our communities and the state. He spoke of the coordination with the city and county and how we're working on the relationship with the Indigenous communities in the City of Flagstaff and surrounding areas. This presentation correlates with public safety and criminal justice. We talked about the Indigenous Representation Project at Sawmill Multicultural Art and Nature Country, County Park. This was part of a conversation through the City of Flagstaff Beautification, Arts, and Sciences Program, and input from the Beautification and Public Art Commission City Staff and City for Representation through cultural art projects. In that conversation, we identified two commissioners to volunteer with the project work group. This presentation correlates with visibility. Finally, the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff did a presentation on their work for the Indigenous Community Cultural Center, looking at some more focus groups and presenting to the Commission for their insights.
Future planning. We have our future planning because we are in the middle of Quarter Two. Our tour of Flagstaff Shelter Services was postponed uh, from yesterday, so therefore, we will be um, redirecting that uh, soon here shortly. We have an upcoming tour of the reclaimed water facility. We are planning to have a retreat this summer. The Commission will have another conversation about the regional plan to provide input. We realize there are the key recommendations that we want to work on together. Education, housing, transportation, wellness, and environmental justice.
So that concludes our um, report, and we um, continue to advocate for uh, City Council and city leadership to continue to be great partners, including listening to the voices of Indigenous relatives. So thank you. Those are gratitude Indigenous languages, and now we welcome any questions. And Rose, um, our staff member Tohee will also support us in responding.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, Council, do we have any uh, questions or comments? Karen, or Councilmember House? Sorry.
First, I just want to say thank you so much for the presentation and for the gift of the tea. I, I can't even express to you how moving that was and your presentation. And when I tell you that I'm genuinely like, holding myself together after that, I truly mean it. So thank you so much for that. Um, I did have a question in regards to the land acknowledgement, because I've, I've loved seeing its inclusion in not only uh, City Council meetings, but also starting to see it among some of the other city commissions. And I've just wondered if it was a recommendation from the Indigenous Commission for that to be included in all city uh, commission meetings, uh, because I certainly see the value of it, and it, it seems so meaningful in keeping that um, focus on inclusion and visibility front forward when it comes to the work that those commissions are doing.
Thank you, Councilmember House. I appreciate your question. And um, we had talked about that before just informally, but I think that uh, when it came, when um, COTA came to support us, they recommended that um, that it would be a good idea for it to be utilized everywhere within city government. So we do support that um, in their recommendation and support of that.
Great, thank you. And then my second question was actually about the Indigenous Representation Project. So I've, I've heard about that, of course, through um, work with the Tri-Diversity Councils with the, the county. And there was a, a presentation that suggested a recommendation to include multicultural representation as part of that. And I wondered if you could speak a little bit more to the intention there, because I know from a, at least one commission, there was a little bit of hesitancy because of not wanting to basically impose on what was intended to be an Indigenous representation and um, enhance that visibility. So can you speak maybe a little bit more to that?
Thank you again. Um, yes, I think that uh, when I first heard about it as a staff member and the conversation within um, the, the, the program that Jana has, um, Jana Weldon and um, Eliza Kreutzman, I think that at that point, they had all, they had, um, and if Eliza's here, I would appreciate her, her input as well, as well as Jana. And at that time, what I had learned was that um, the program had put it as a line item for Indigenous representation in art. Um, and we really certainly do appreciate that. And however, we also discussed further that it would be good to not, to really, I mean, our way of Indigenous ways is to share, and that's a way of relationship building and to build upon the things that we, we have. And if um, the city has funding and if there is an avenue to um, also promote other people of colors artwork in the public spaces, we do welcome that, and I think that that is the way of Indigenous kinship, and I think that our Commissioners agree on that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Rose, and Commissioners, whether it's the Adichai and Toya, for your presentation. Great job tonight. And I, I just want to express gratitude to you, Rose, and all the Commissioners. It's been a real uh, pleasure to be part of that group with all of you and, and just listening to the important conversations that you all have on that commission. And uh, it's just been fun watching that group kind of get formulated, put together, and, and really start hitting it, uh, it's, it's dried. And I, I just so look forward to the, the good work ahead, and just want to express gratitude. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, my comment doesn't directly relate to the Indigenous Commission, but it's pretty close. I just want to reflect back on my six years on City Council. And some of the most meaningful things that I've done were the opportunities I had to meet with our neighbors. And by our neighbors, I mean that uh, I had occasion to meet with Walupai uh, leadership, with uh, Dene leadership, and uh, with the Havasupai Council, and also with the Hopi, and got to, I will say, not participate in, but be present for the Hopi Kachina uh, dances, which I will have to admit was a hi- highlight of the last ten years of my life. I really enjoyed that. And what's that? Wild pie, yes, the wild pie also. So I mean, uh, in, in some of these occasions, after official meetings, we're invited into people's homes. And I mean, what more can a person do than invite you into their home and feed you? So uh, just wonderful experiences for me, and I thought you might appreciate my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Um, it's, it's an honor to be invited to a Kachina dance and to um, be welcomed into um, those um, those events that our people do hold. And so um, thank you, Jehat um, Gamio and thank you also, Councilmember Shimonie, for your gratitude and for your support throughout this uh, time.
Thank you. Well, uh, Councilmember Sals?
First, I would say, Maraming salamat po. So that's gratitude, uh, speaking from my two languages from the Philippines. And with that gratitude, I will reach out to Rose and return the favor in sharing with you tea I brought back from the Philippines last summer. It's uh, with just gratitude and appreciation of, of the time and talent that you dedicate to, in service to our community by being on the Commission. Because time is a non-renewable resource that we share to our community, and with that, thank you.
You, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you all for everything you do for the city. I can't imagine how we would work without you. Um, your work is invaluable, and thank you for bringing the tea. And Rose, I just, I see Rose often, and I enjoy our conversations and you keeping me in the loop. And to everyone on the Commission, just, I really appreciate everything you do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'll just say that you all have been very busy. Thank you, thank you for all the work you're doing. It has been um, a, a real influence on this council. And I appreciate not just the work that has been done, but I know there's lots of work still to do, and I appreciate the partnerships, the knowledge that you all provide to us, because it is essential for so many of our programs, everything that we're trying to move forward and doing it in a much more sensible way, respectful way is, leads to the City of Flagstaff's better future for all of us. So thank you, thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I'm just thankful to be here with all of you and to know that we're all doing our best to be good relatives to one another for the City of Flagstaff and for future generations.
Thank you so much. With that, we are down to our Yes.
I just also want to just thank um, City Manager and all of the staff, you know, Shannon, Heidi, and everybody who's been really supportive of, of our work and just of us personally as staff members.
Oh, Councilmember Brashly?
If I may, Mayor, I just want to remind everyone as you're walking out, there are write-in spots available for the council election coming up in November. And um, and uh, and that, that was done ser- I, I say that seriously, but also just a reminder in the future, it would be really nice to have Native representation on council. And any work that you can do to promote and uh, facilitate uh, good candidates coming forward from your communities would benefit our city immensely.
Can I respond to that comment real quickly?
Absolutely.
It has been in my thoughts, but at this time, I'm, I'm watching, learning, and working with you all. So that way, should the time come, I'll be more than ready and grateful to accept it, you know? Thank you for your time and for your compassion and understanding. Have a good evening.
Well-stated, Councilmember Brashly. Thank you for adding on. Uh, with that, we are down to the agenda item number seven, our Tourism Commission update. And uh, we'll take this, and then we'll have a break before we uh, move on to the Lone Tree Overpass. But a lot of cool stuff in tourism, so.
Let me get this loaded up. Two seconds. Okay. Not sure why that loaded. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Council, Trace Ward, CVB Director, Discover Flagstaff Director, also doing special projects for the Economic Vitality Division. Uh, I join you here today with the Tourism Commission uh, Chairwoman Terry Medexa. Uh, we are here to give an update on the recent and current strategies and tactics employed by Discover Flagstaff in concert with the Appointed Tourism Commission, uh, and then just a little bit of philosophy that we have as well. Turn this so I can see it. So uh, the Tourism uh, Com- Commission Authority states that, that there shall be seven voting members who shall meet uh, to consider and recommend programs for the expenditure of the tourism portion of the BBB tax allocation under Chapter Three dash O six Hospitality Industry Tax Revenues. The mission of the Discover Flagstaff team is to develop and promote uh, and maintain Flagstaff as a year-round destination with professional visitor services that will benefit the community economically and environmentally and socially. The Discover uh, Discover Flagstaff is the only section in the, in a division or section that is specifically tasked to grow the visitor economy and thus the BBB funding for all to benefit. Our mission is to educate, inspire, and motivate travel to our destination, thus making many things possible for our mountain town, arts, sciences, beautification, parks, maintenance, and much, much more. Um, we can look at the two percent BBB tax and the growth of this tax as a key metric measurement, but uh, let's not forget that the BBB tax only also uh, represents, uh, it's not just a small portion of this, but it also represents uh, the goods and services that the visitor spends uh, while they're here. When the BBB tax is collected, so is the transaction, uh, privilege tax or sales tax of two point two percent, which goes to the general fund. That very same transaction also produces uh, profit for the business owner, uh, and that money goes to the employees who circulate those funds in our community, take care of their families, and themselves. When we're talking about the BBB, we're really talking about a entire transaction, uh, and then a circulation of funds into the community that never would have occurred had that visitor not chosen Flagstaff. Tourism is a unique business where the city is the product. Uh, and the money uh, coming in is infused into the community and then circulated without uh, with, throughout the community. Rather than funds strictly coming from a recirculated dollar, the visitor comes, spends their money, and goes home. Okay. The BBB tax has gone from five million, as you can see from the slide, to ten million in the past eleven years. This hundred percent increase over this time period is not just happenstance. This is a tremendous amount of work on behalf of the city and all of the stakeholders to serve our guests. Forty-plus years of marketing uh, and direct sales to consumers and travel influencers, that's brought about a travel and brand, a, it's brought about a level of brand equity for the city, familiarity, and ambassadorship that would not exist today for Flagstaff if this effort had not been made. It's forty-plus years of infused and then recirculated dollars that have built and maintained so many things around us in our everyday lives. These forty-plus years of building brand equity has had an unsung, to some degree, and very symbiotic relationship between creating a better place to live and in uh, offering a wonderful place to visit. So our philosophy um, at Discover Flagstaff is, is the wild places and natural wonders of Flagstaff and the surrounding area make our destination unique, excuse me, and attractive to the visiting public. But it is the people of Flagstaff that create the culture, institutions, and attractions that truly take care of and welcome our visitor. We take a holistic approach to visitor marketing, managing the tourism economy, with the stakeholders and community in mind every step of the way. So Discover Flagstaff uh, takes our role of lifting the visitor economy very seriously. We make the highest and best use of our funds that are available to us. Forty-plus years of direct sales and marketing has built brand equity, and now we are taking our efforts down to very specific um, psychographics, behaviors, and motivators to the most likely prospect visitor on the platforms that prospect visitor on the platforms that they consume information with the right inspiration to motivate their decision to choose Flagstaff when they're spending their dollars. This, this slideshow, this slide that you're seeing here is just the very top of the dissection process, where we are placing visitors in large vertical markets. In turn, these markets are assigned to positions or small teams within the Discover Flagstaff organization. So, the stakeholders and community light our path, but data and best practices guide our tactics. We use tried and true practices and state-of-the-art technology to tell us who, what, where, when, and of the marketing delivery that we do. We employ a visitor intercept study every five years and participate in partnership with NAU College of Business. We have website and other own media analytics, page views, time on site, click-throughs, and that sort of thing. We have analytics and anecdotal data from interacting with the public on social media platforms. We have A/B testing that we do in real time with customer-facing creative and messaging. We aggregate accommodations data, average daily rates, occupancy rate per available room, digital ad serving with in-market attribution. We identify look-alike audiences to target. We also retarget, have retargeting capabilities when we do our marketing. And we take advantage of Arizona Office of Tourism data collection, aggregation, and packaging. Also, we, we track attractions attendance. We use our stakeholder data when possible and industry best practices. So, we just have a couple of quick data shots that we use. This is one of our purveyors, Datify. Here's a look at one of the mini dashboard views, which is showing visitor in-market data is capturing through mobile devices in location. This screenshot shot is one of our vendors, which is Datify again, showing visitor day spend in Flagstaff compared to 2019. This here is another shot of some data. Here's one look at our booking engine, which is on our website, on discoverflagstaff.com. This particular dashboard page reflects data from July 2021 through April 2022. These 4,160 referrals represent customers deeper into the buying funnel. They put in dates, viewed many of the accommodations here in Flagstaff, and they've clicked on View and Book and are at the final phase of outbound clicking to, from our site to book direct to accommodations, landing pages within all of the accommodations in Flagstaff. This widget on our website can give us valuable information about our prospective visitor as well as provide direct sales and opportunities for traditional accommodations. And here's one more, it's a Google Analytics. This particular dashboard, this view compares data from January 2022. I know it's hard to read. We can walk you through any of this stuff anytime you'd like. But it compares January 2022 through April 2022, comparing some data ranges showing partner and stakeholder outbound clicks. It's very important, because on our website, one of our goals is that it, that we have outbound clicks to all of our partners. We'll get a couple million unique views a year on our website. We want to make sure that translates. Okay. So, the Tourism Commission gives us perspective. It gives us operational perspective, community perspective, and visitor perspective. We meet monthly and collaborate on annual strategic direct sales and marketing plan each January for the following fiscal year. We remain teachable as a team. We don't know it all, but we also remain curious and tenacious. We have a terrific partner in our Tourism Commission, but I can tell you that our eyes and ears are open to all community members with productive input for us. As stated earlier, I'm, I'm presenting today with the Tourism Commission Chair, Teri Medexa, and I would like to introduce her now. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Teri Medexa, Executive Director of the Flagstaff Downtown Business Alliance. Usually, I come before you and speak all things about downtown, but today, I come before you as your Tourism Commission Chair and to talk about the positive impact that tourism has on our overall economy and the great work of the Discover Flagstaff team. The Tourism Commission is comprised of members that represent a diverse industry. As you can see, we have an event producer, we have a hotelier, corporate travel professional, arts council representative, and small business leaders that help support the creative and expert team at Discover Flagstaff. At the beginning of each year, the Commission meets with the Discover Flagstaff team to outline strategies and tactics for the upcoming fiscal year. An important exercise we go through each year is conducting a SWOT analysis to review strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to the visitor economy, which contributes heavily to the economic vitality of Flagstaff. We think broadly, and we work to incorporate our community's values, such as appreciation of our natural surroundings, sustainability efforts, and vibrancy, and how we can further grow our engagement with the visiting public. And we also consider the impacts of challenges, such as workforce shortages and the need to message for greater environmental awareness. There is no shortage of opportunities to showcase Flagstaff to potential visitors. From the great programs and expansion at the Lowell Campus, to luring the film industry, promoting high-altitude training, to celebrating our expanding food and craft beer offerings, and so much more, the opportunities are truly endless to expand our tourism reach. We also consider threats, like the possibility of another public health crisis, and strategies to mitigate those threats. We follow the data on origin markets, both domestic and international, recognizing that international travelers have a different decision process, and this can change by country. We are so fortunate to have Sherri Lamont as our Travel Trade Manager. She has spent the past 30 years building relationships with tour operators and international travel media, resulting in great exposure of Flagstaff to these key international markets. And the Marketing Rule of Five, this is Lori Pappas's specialty. It's one example of a marketing strategy to apply the Rule of Five, and they use this very successfully, where you take at least five tactics with every campaign to broaden your reach and make sure you're using different and varying platforms, just to make sure you're reaching everybody. People receive their information differently, so it is the team's approach to utilize as many platforms as possible and not rely on just one strategy. So, pre-pandemic, Discover Flagstaff was focused on lunar legacy, promotion of our amazing gastronomy scene, the festival season, and receiving renowned attention and awards in the process. Occupancy was at a near all-time high for calendar year ending 2019, and the average daily rate was a record-breaking $106. BBB tax collection was also at an all-time high at almost $9 million. During the pandemic, Discover Flagstaff impressed us all by pivoting to inspire the traveling public to plan for a brighter day and keep Flagstaff alive in their minds and for future travel. And for those still planning to travel to Flagstaff, we reminded them how they can stay, play, and distance responsibly. Occupancy and rates for traditional accommodations, as well as non-traditional accommodations, initially took a hit. But it is important to note that due to all of the outdoor adventure options in and around Flagstaff, we were far less affected than many other destinations. This can be seen in the fact that we took less than a $1 million hit to BBB tax collections. And as we recovered from the pandemic, the team took a two-track approach, and while being a leader in safety messaging for the city, we also had a recovery plan in the wings. While following the safety protocol set by the state and council, we took advantage of the pent-up demand to be outdoors and to enjoy the cool pines and starry night skies. And today, we look forward to promoting a schedule full of festivals, events, and all of the key attractions of our mountain town. And our efforts are paying off. For the year ending 2021, traditional accommodation metrics had the highest average daily rate in the history of our record-keeping at $123. And as you saw earlier, the BBB is projected to be over $10 million for fiscal year 2022. And to engage all of those that have a hand in making Flagstaff a welcoming and memorable destination, Discover Flagstaff hosts an annual stakeholder meeting where we take a look at the past year's accomplishments, we look forward to the year ahead, and there is also a keynote motivational speaker to offer attendees some fresh perspective. The Discover Flagstaff team is exceptionally talented at producing inspiring videos. Here is one example of a video produced to showcase Flagstaff as we are starting to come out of the pandemic. It has been widely viewed and shared across social media channels. And after this, I turn it back over to Trace.
All right, Stace, I pushed the down one. It did not give me down. Try it again. There you go. Thank you. Just a little bit more. Okay. So, Discover Flagstaff loves showing by example. We are one of the first destinations in the country to join Pledge for the Wild, a moniker with a mission. Not only do we want to keep our wild places wild, but we want the visitor to have the ability to participate in our values. Text WILD4FLAG to 4344321, and every penny of donations goes directly to the Flagstaff Trails Initiative. And of course, we want every visitor to know about our carbon neutrality goal. It is values like this that we believe are unique selling propositions for the visiting public. So, destination stewardship and tourism can and should go hand in hand. We work with the Flagstaff Fire Department every year in messaging fire safety. We work with the community and the, in the visitor center in promoting safe snow play and how to treat the environment. And Flagstaff Local is a mirror to our community of how you want to see yourself and how you want to see your neighbor. We, as a team, lean in. We help wherever we can have a positive impact, whether that's recruitment, water services, IT parking, emergency services, and more. And, of course, I have to talk about a few awards. The team has won a variety of awards in the past few years for things such as partnership with the Trails Initiative, Best Website Design, and Lunar Legacy Programming. We will continue to do good work and hopefully see more recognition for the City of Flagstaff and our stakeholders. And a quick look forward, a look forward can, can be like looking into the fog sometimes, but we have our fog lights on. It is likely that the drive market will continue to be the most important recovery origin market for the next few years. Flight markets are sure to grow in importance. Engaging visitors in our carbon neutrality goal and the sustainability, sustainable tourism will be a cornerstone message, as visitors want everyone, not just their hometown, to care about climate change. Astro tourism will grow as a segment with all the amazing things happening up on Mars Hill. And of all the key drivers, there's many, gastronomy, brewery culture, Route 66 nostalgia, and Native American culture, winter recreation, cool summers, high altitude, the national parks, monuments, and so on, they will all have a seat at the marketing table. So, I want to thank you for your attention today. We appreciate your continued support, and we're here for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Trace. And Teri. Any, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. As a small business owner, I can tell you that we would not be able to do this without you. The way that you helped us all pivot through the pandemic was crucial, and now that the pandemic is slowing down, it's crucial that we have you backing us moving forward. So, I just want to say thank you. Unprecedented times and scary, to be honest, and the support was huge. I love the social media. You do a great job with that, the videos, great job. And I guess my one question, I'm wondering if we have any data on how the Pledge for the Wild is going with fundraising and--
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember, for the question, and we do have data on it. We've, we've collected a couple thousand dollars so far. It's gone directly to the Trails Initiative, and we plan on focusing on it to get that number much, much higher. But a few thousand dollars so far in terms of, in terms of eyes-on engagement, I don't have that with me at the moment, but we could get that for you.
Okay, thank you. And I do have one more question in terms of international travelers. Now that things are kind of getting back to normal, are you seeing that on the rise?
We are. We're seeing what's, what's called the leisure traveler, the individual travel, go up significantly. In terms of group travel, that still has yet to rebound. It just tends to be a different, a little bit different customer, and, you know, they're in not having to be in the same space with others as a tour operator would have them. So, that has to rebound still. It is coming back slowly, but we're seeing France and Germany, it seems like those two countries don't seem to care about much, they just go. So, we're seeing a lot of France and Germany, and, and the rest of the countries are slowly coming back as they have a comfort level.
Thank you, and thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy. And then Councilmember Shimon thereafter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just thought I might mention that I was invited to a meeting with the Director of the National Park Service, last Friday, actually. And it was a bunch of civic leaders, council members, mayors, et cetera, from the Western United States, talking about our relationship between communities and the national parks and national monuments. And it was very interesting. A lot of the issues that were brought up by other people were the same issues that I hear about, housing, et cetera. So, the Park Service is interested in, they-- So the Park Service is interested in, they realize that they're a driver for places like Flagstaff, places like Tucson. So that was an interesting meeting. I just thought I'd casually mention that.
Thank you for the comment, council member. And we work closely with the Park Service. We're in communication, both, both sales managers and my marketing manager frequently. So they have a lot of interesting things happening at the actual parks, poetry readings, and they're trying a lot of new, new stuff, yoga, I've heard of that, so it's pretty fun.
One thing I might mention is a trend that was noticed by some of the people on the call, including some of the Park Service people, is it seems that the people that go into the parks and into the backcountry, they're less qualified to do what they're attempting to do than they were, say, a generation or two ago. I thought that was a little surprising, a little interesting. I mean, people are going in the backcountry and getting in trouble and having, there was a discussion about a lot of these communities were providing search and rescue. I don't think we do that for the Grand Canyon, but in a lot of the smaller parks, the local communities are having to provide search and rescue at significant expense, where 20, 30 years ago, that was a non-issue. Thank you.
Mayor, council member, if I can just comment to that real quickly, we do work with them on a program called Hug a Tree, and we promote that both in your visitor, yep, it's in there, correct, and we promote it on social media as well, which is to stay put is really the bottom line. But we work with them on that safety message as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shumoni.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Trace, and Terry, and Commission, and team. Great presentation. Appreciate that. I love the focus on sustainability and climate. And just had one quick comment question. Are we doing any focused advertising to our neighbors to the north?
Councilmember, are you speaking of Utah and Colorado, or are you talking about...
No, specifically like, yeah, tribal nations and the Navajo Nation.
We, we work with them regularly in promoting any services that they provide for visitors. So does that answer your question?
Kind of. I guess, you know, I'll just maybe make it just a comment, and then I'll let you and the team and the Commission just kind of work with it however you choose. But I guess just the idea is, you know, we have a lot of, you were talking about drive market and that being the focus over the next few years. And, you know, I thought, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of people coming in from, you know, the Navajo Nation and the tribal nations, and it'd be great if some of these advertisements that we've made were really focused to that market, in their language, in their culture, you know, really done with intention, and that would just be so cool to be, you know, marketing to them. But yeah, Heidi, go ahead.
Mayor, Councilmember Shumoni, we definitely have a section, a whole section in the visitor guide that talks about our native cultures and what you can do. We also have fam tours that we create where they can go and experience the culture. We're actually working more with Rose Tohe on how we can represent even more. And as far as asking them to come here, basically, we don't have a lot of, there's not a lot of media outlets in those areas to do so, but we definitely have our relationship with the library out in the county areas, Tuba City Library, and places like that where our visitor guides are placed so that they know what's happening in our community, and then there's information on Flag 365 for events that they can join us at in our community. Hope that answers that question for you.
It helps. I guess, sorry, go ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, I'm sort of putting on my DBA hat to answer this also, which is, we're very dedicated to offering free, family-friendly events all summer long. Movies on the Square is one example. And for that event, we actually try to specifically target our neighbors to the north to invite them to come to Flagstaff for these free, family-friendly events and activities. It is a goal of ours to do better, but it is definitely part of our marketing strategy to invite the broader community to come into downtown to enjoy these events. So thank you.
Okay. In closing, I'll just, you know, plant this seed. It'd be great to have the Tourism Commission maybe have a co-meeting with the Indigenous Commission to talk about how to create focused marketing for the tribal region and Navajo Nation. I just think that'd be so cool and an area for, you know, growth. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember House.
Thank you so much for the presentation and wonderful stuff that you guys are doing in the community and for the community through the Tourism Commission. I did have a question about, in looking at the SWOT analysis and under opportunities you listed diversity, which is of course a passion area for myself. And I'm wondering how the Tourism Commission is engaging or looking to deeper engage the diverse neighborhoods and communities of Flagstaff. For example, are, have you looked at, or are you looking at the possibility of partnerships or sponsorship or highlighting of some of the cultural events that happen, or even cultural festivals, things like that, as more of a highlight of opportunities for folks to come into the community and engage in that aspect?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. We, we do, we're always looking for opportunities. Sometimes we don't know what we don't know, so it's, we're eyes and ears are open. I will tell you that with the festivals, we are promoting all of the diverse festivals in town, and we spend a lot of time and attention on that. We do have a section on our website, which we talk about the Green Book. I don't know if you're familiar with that. I think you are, yes. So we are, we're all about it. We, we think that that is a great story to tell. So we're looking for those opportunities all the time, and my staff is looking for those opportunities all the time. But I would love to talk to you more about it, and if there are opportunities we aren't aware of, let's, let's look at those and see how we can put them into action.
Thank you for that. Do you have an area on the site for people to share those things that you might not be aware of?
Well, we do, yeah. I'll let you talk about that. We do, we have an opportunity at the bottom of the website where it says partners. You can do that. You can always email any of us, and we're very accessible. We don't necessarily have an area on the website that's for reviews or comments, so to speak. We haven't really found a need for that in the past, but again, I'd be happy if you allow, I'll be happy to reach out to you and brainstorm on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember House. Another great opportunity is to encourage really anybody who has an event, an activity, a festival, to include that on Flag 365. It's free, it's easy, it's so, so easy, and that helps inform the team so they can help better direct their marketing efforts. But then, that's what they use to help promote on their social media. That's how they build the What's Happening newsletter that goes out, is making sure they're pulling from Flag 365. So I would encourage, you know, all of you to let the groups you work with know about the value and the ease of using Flag 365. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I just also wanted to share with you, in relation to Councilmember House's question, I also want to just share that internally, as a staff member, we've been working with Discover Flagstaff and the Flagstaff Visitor Center, and we're starting our first indigenous art market there, just as a pilot project for right now, starting at the end of this month, running through Labor Day. So just wanted to let you know that as well. And I'm sure this is just the start of things for, you know, other cultural opportunities.
Rose, is that at the visitor center, did you say? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to express my profound gratitude to Madam Chairwoman Madexa and the commissioners of the Tourism Commission. Gratitude, again, you know, time is a non-renewable resource, and I thank you and the rest of the commission for your time and talent, serving on the commission, and very engaged commission, too. Also, I want to pause and provide a space, just a gratitude for the industry. Our BBB Tax Collection over the years has saved every year a household of, a saving of 1,800. That 1,800 savings per household funds parks and recreations, open space, trails, park art, arts and sciences, and STEAM. 1,800 savings per household every year. And the industry collectively employs over 9,000 employees. That impacts over 9,000 households and families. Also, space for gratitude for the industry and the four hotels who responded two years ago, who opened up their rooms and their hotels, first as a quarantine hotel within partnership with the County Health District, and the three hotels in partnership with Flagstaff Shelter Services as emergency shelter when we had to shut down the shelter. And gratitude to Team Flagstaff, Discover Flagstaff, which is officially a DMO, and has gained awards since then. DMO stands for Destination Marketing Organization. And with that leadership, earlier this month, during the National Travel and Tourism Week Celebration, Discover Flagstaff mobilized over 70 volunteers, including myself, to pick up trash in downtown and the South Side neighborhood area. And your messaging is spot on, especially everywhere I go, I invite them everywhere, speak as, on our lobbying trips, or as, just visiting a place like Washington DC. And Mr. Charles Sample, he is the Assistant Secretary for Government Affairs for the Department of Transportation in Washington DC. Mayor and I met with him in our federal lobbying trip by Zoom, and I mentioned, come visit Flagstaff. Aside from the cool places and all the trails, we have eight breweries. A month later, I met Mr. Sample in Washington DC at the National War for Sport Conference, and I walked up to him, and I said, "Sir, this is Regina from Flagstaff." Oh, Flagstaff, eight breweries. Definitely on my list to visit. So your messaging is spot on. And I do mention also that Discover Flagstaff hosts a monthly coffee lodge with partners and stakeholders within the community, whether events, lodging, attractions, and restaurants. And they get to share what's going on with their respective organization, and perhaps there's a platform for, to invite, to expand on the diversity as Ms. Councilmember House has mentioned. But I do have a question. I know I have the answer for this, but could you talk to, can you speak, expand more on the visitor guide, how, how the content was generated and how it's available? Thank you.
Councilmember, thank you, and thanks for that introduction. As you know, every year, we do produce a visitor guide. We have, our goal was to go digital fully, but we found that that's not what the customer wants. They want a mix, so we still do produce the about 90,000, and we give all of them away. They're requested. So last year, we had to actually order more, they're in high demand. The content is free for all partners that are BBB collecting, unless they are a nonprofit association that serves the visitor in some way, then that's free as well. And we try to be very inclusive with the visitor guide in making sure that it's a true resource for, for the folks who are picking it up, and it's, it's inclusive, and it's complete, and those sorts of things. The creative is done by Jennifer Schaber out of our office. She is pretty much nothing shy than, of genius when it comes to creative work, and it's, it's very much focused, again, as you can see, and we presented an out-of-home, a static board to you recently. It's the same type of creative, and it's trying to support the idea that we want to keep the wild places wild, respect the environment, and those sorts of things. So that's where the creative comes from, and I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. Well, I just really appreciate how much work you all are putting into and adapting in a way that, with the ecotourism, the responsibility on one hand, and providing information people need to stay safe and keep our community safe, while also making it so attractive. That dual messaging and short snippets and single logos and so forth is, yeah, it's brilliant. So I really appreciate the focus that you all are putting on our ecotourism in a way that I see has many benefits, more than just, hey, tourist dollars, people stay in here, this is taking care of our community altogether in the process.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna take a 20-minute break, or 21 minutes, and so at 5:30 sharp, we can restart here. All right, let's get this party started. We have the livestream all set up? Cool. All right. We are down to agenda item eight, the Lone Tree Overpass Project, Discussion on the Economic Impact Study and Eldon Loop Road Connection. Ms. Cameron.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Christine Cameron. I'm a project manager with City Capital Improvements. So we've got two items that we want to talk to you tonight about the Lone Tree Overpass. One of them is the Economic Impact Study and also the Eldon Loop Corridor. So the Economic Impact Study was, it was previous mayor and council directed staff to perform that study. You know, this was rolled into WSP's design, and their economic group conducted that. So Jason Karloftis with WSP will go over that information tonight. And also the Eldon Loop, this is a connector roadway that was part of the 2010 engineering study and also included in the 2018 bond proposition language, in the pamphlet language, excuse me. We've heard from property owners in the neighborhood that they want access. They, they don't want the overpass to cut, cut the industrial area in two, where they can't get from one side to the other. We've also heard from the South Side community that they don't want additional traffic coming into their neighborhood, and they don't want truck traffic coming into their neighborhood from this, or from this connector. So those are the two that we'll be covering tonight, the two topics. We will need council's direction on the Eldon Loop Corridor, and I'll turn it over to Jason now. He's with our design team of WSP and Ames Construction, and he is the design lead. We also have, excuse me, Jeff Baumann, our traffic engineer, and Julie Lead from Peak Engineering with us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Pleasure to be here back in front of you guys, or in front of everybody this evening. Happy to present our update on the Economic Impact Study and the Eldon Corridor. Thank you, Christine, for the introduction. Also online, I do have Chris Kane, the project manager for Ames Construction, and our economist, Sophie Cohen, as well as our roadway lead, Frank Frye, and our traffic lead, Joseph Vaskevic. So if there's any questions, I may throw it to them, that if I can't answer them. So appreciate them being online as well this evening. So just to start, Christine covered what we're going to be talking about this evening. We will start with the Economic Impact Study, and then we'll go with the Eldon Corridor, and then talk about some, some options if it does stay, that we can try to do what's called street calming, to try to discourage some paths through traffic and truck traffic through the corridor, so that's another option we can consider. So we'll try to give some multiple options of keeping the street. So we'll try to give some multiple options of keeping the street if it or if it's removed. Or we can keep it with some modifications, some mitigation measures. That's sort of what we'll cover this evening. So starting with economics, I want to sort of just give the background of what caused this study. The big change of this street network is the changes in traffic patterns. So we want to evaluate how that would affect the impacts of the economics in the area. Our approach to our study, the impacts, and we were asked to also evaluate the gentrification. Focus on the south side neighborhood. So we did evaluate, we added that to our EIS. If I use the term EIS, that's the Economic Impact Study. That's just a shorthand we use, but we'll cover the gentrification that we did add to that study towards the end of our study. So you guys have seen this graphic quite a bit, quite a few times. Let me change this to. Laser pointer real quick. So this is from our larger six lane model. When I use the term six lane model does not mean Lone Tree is a six lane roadway. It's just from our larger model, we had capacity from original TIA to have large enough volumes at the intersections. To have enough capacity, the intersections were behaved as a six lane model. So. At no time is Lone Tree ever been a six lane roadway. Just want to clarify that. We did stick with this model for our EIS because it was a more conservative approach. It had the larger change in traffic patterns compared to the new four lane model. That we'll we'll be presenting in a few weeks to you with the intersection updates. So because this had the larger change in impacts, we want to keep this as a conservative approach from economic impact. From this model that we presented back to you back in January, you can see the biggest changes are on Beaver in San Francisco. There's about a seventy percent reduction on these roadways. Generally, we also pulled traffic from the Milton Route sixty six corridor up in the northwest of this figure. Down to Butler Avenue. So those are the other big trends. We're pulling traffic from what stays currently on Milton Route sixty six down to Butler. Lone Tree itself becomes a major north-south corridor. And then once you get east of Lone Tree, traffic returns back to Route sixty six and then heads east. So the black numbers are the build condition for when Lone Tree is in and constructed. Red is previous before Lone Tree. So that's a no build condition. So east-west on Route sixty six, there is about a twenty five percent increase in traffic east of Lone Tree. About a twenty five percent reduction west of Lone Tree. And then at Butler and Lone Tree, there's about a twenty five percent increase. So you're just generally seeing a shift in traffic from the northwest quadrant, the downtown area. To the southeast Lone Tree Butler area. So that's the general traffic conditions. Our study did focus on traffic because that's the best data we have. We didn't focus too much on multimodal shifts. We have a lot less refined data. We didn't want to make guesses and try to make assumptions on really loose data. So we did not try to make guesses on impacts to bicycle movements or pedestrian traffic. So that has not been included in the study. Now, we can make some assumptions and some general trend guesses. But so this will be focused mainly on the traffic trends. So as I said before, San Francisco Beaver will have a reduction, Butler Lone Tree area. Will have an increase in vehicles and Milton and Route sixty six has that split between the east-west sides of Lone Tree overall. So spending impacts themselves, when we get into an EIS, we really focus on two types of spending. We focus on opportunity spending. So as you're driving by a business. You have a pass by opportunity to spend. So it's you're going to morning, you're going to work in the morning, you need coffee. You happen to be passing by a coffee shop. You have an opportunity to pass by, stop for coffee. So these businesses are located on the street and you're passing on your route to traffic. That's your opportunity dollars being spent. You also have destination sales. You're meeting friends after work for drinks. You're going to your favorite diner for pizza or burger. Those are destination. You're going there regardless of what route or what traffic trends are telling you to go. That's destination. Destination is a lot less impacted by your street network. You're going to go there regardless of what the traffic trends are going because you have an intention to go there. So the shift in traffic is not going to really impact your destination traffic. It's only going to impact your opportunity. Other opportunity traffics might be like grocery stores. If you're going home, you need to pick up food for the kids, you're going to go to the grocery store on your way home. That's on your natural route from traffic. So if you put those types of concepts, that's really what we tried to break down our traffic or our types of commercial districts. Hotel lodging is probably not going to be impacted by too much, but you're really looking for those keystone. What are your pass by traffics where you're stopping in? On your route to and from work. Those are going to be your biggest impacts in your corridors. Do want to back up real quick. We did break up our zones into two big areas. We did try to focus on the downtown commercial districts. And then we have the big commercial district at Lone Tree and Butler. We do have some commercial districts we recognize along Route sixty six east of Lone Tree, but it's not very high density. So we didn't do a big focus on that that part of the commercial district just because it wasn't high density. So I don't, I do want to point that out. We also looked at spending per trip. This was done using Bureau of Labor Statistics. So when you, when I get into some dollars, that's where it's based on. And we'll get into more definition of that, but we did use a composite of similar regional markets. The Bureau Labor Statistics does that have defined data for Flagstaff itself. So the approach we took was to find similar regional data. It was a blend of Phoenix and Denver primarily. And then we adjusted it for demographic data. So we tried to get as close to the Flagstaff demography as we could. So that's the approach we took for getting our our numbers that you'll see later. So in general, we looked at both the opening year, the closing year, and then you'll see an average over that span. So when we did our traffic modeling, we do the opening year of twenty twenty six. And we do a horizon year. All the the traffic data is based on metro plans modeling. So they do have assumptions on vehicular growth as I explained previously back in January. And these numbers are presenting the average annual change in automobile trips in each commercial district. So this is just the change in automobile stops or pass or buys through the districts. So you again, over the average annual trips through Beaver San Francisco districts. You're going to get about a half million less cars going through there on their normal commute. Butler Lone Tree, you're getting an increase of about a quarter million at the opening year. And then as you get your normal growth in vehicular traffic, it increases about a half million. The reason Butler and Lone Tree don't balance with Beaver and San Francisco at twenty twenty six. Is because you get that north-south connection of Lone Tree and then they head east on Route sixty six. By the time you get to twenty forty horizon year, they start balancing out. So that's why you're seeing that discrepancy there. So now we get into the spending impacts and this sort of breaks it down by business type. Because going back to the opportunity and destination concepts, different types get different impacts. And we see here in these two areas, in these two districts, we looked at your biggest. Business types are business retail and food services and drinking places. So these are your two biggest business types in these commercial districts. They represent almost eighty percent, ninety percent of the Beaver San Francisco district. And they're roughly about the same in Lone Tree Butler districts. So those are your primaries. So a lot of these are going to be. You know, if you're meeting with friends and stuff, a lot of these are going to be destination, the food services and drinking places. But you will also get some opportunity if you're going home and picking up food for your kids on the way home. So we had to try to balance that with our with our economics folks. Business retail, we had to make a, it's a little bit harder to find because business retail is a pretty broad category. So our economists made the best decisions they could in balancing that category between the opportunity and destination. Based on the change of ADT, they broke out the output economic impact. So this is the the impacts of the change in traffic. So the output of dollars. The the resolve into sort of an impact of equivalent employment in the district. And the earnings overall in the district. So these are sort of broken out numbers. So I'll focus on the twenty twenty six year primarily. And then you can see the rest of the numbers, but you see the Beaver San Francisco district is anticipated to have generally for the entire district. Again, this isn't a singular business. This is the entire district overall. About a loss of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars of output reduction just based on traffic. It's an equivalent of about four less employees in the entire district and about a hundred and twenty thousand less in earnings. It's offset by an increase in the Butler Lone Tree District of a hundred and sixty seven thousand increase in output. An employment increase of about two employees and earnings increase of fifty thousand. So the overall net effect in the opening year will be a reduction. Employment of about two staff and output of about two hundred thousand dollars and earnings of about seventy thousand dollars. So again, this is just based on traffic. And then put it into the larger scheme of Flagstaff overall. Flagstaff employees, seventy two thousand workers citywide. And we're projecting about a two staff change. Just to point out again. This is fairly conservative. We're looking at just the ADT impacts. We're not evaluating the impacts of increased workers due to construction. We're not looking at multimodal shifts. We wanted to be as conservative as possible in this analysis. Try to get just on the traffic shifts. Just want to refocus that. We were also, the summary of this output. We did have because of the general shift and because we are sending some people up northeast. And again, we didn't include that either just because of the low density and the types of businesses up there. We do expect an annual net change of a loss of one point six jobs from this project in these two sectors. This isn't to say the city will have a net loss, just these two districts. Will have a net change of a one point six staff reduction. So it's it's the spending dollars will be shifted elsewhere outside of this, these two districts if it's not offset elsewhere. We do think the trend wise, because there's especially that drop in traffic on Beaver and San Francisco, there's an opportunity to. Increase walkability and pet bike traffic along those corridors. A lot of those businesses already are very walkable type businesses. They're they're bars, they're eateries. They're places you can go hang out and go to multiple places that you likely would see an increase. We do not want to make those guests in those projections though. So we do think there will be a natural shift just with the business types that. There will be an encouragement to have some of that offset naturally. We also do not account for productivity and improvements in travel times. So as we've previously shown in January, we do believe this network improvement will increase travel times for commuters. This is provide another great separation for the city of Flagstaff, which should help people travel the downtown area, reduce congestion on Milton especially. And will let people get to and from their businesses earlier or easier. Maybe encourage people to make an additional trip if needed to go see a business. And so there may be some offset just naturally by people being able to to have less congestion on the streets. That was not included in this analysis because again, that's a grayer area, a little bit more difficult for economists to project. So mitigation strategies, how do we offset this change? We've already talked a little bit about the natural adjustment. That's probably the most likely scenario of how it'll naturally offset. You'll get more business types. Especially if we have the multimodal district, you're already get more of an entertainment district that's going to be encouraged bicyclists and multimodal users using one district. You might get more vehicle dependent users in another district. That just might be the natural mitigation patterns and businesses will adjust to the natural patterns that come from this type of project. If the city were to designate bike corridors, Beaver and San Francisco, that might help accelerate that type of shift in traffic. Especially if we are seeing those types of reductions that our models are predicting. We'll also be taking this information to the public at our public meetings and soliciting additional ideas of what we might see. Or what what some public input might be on expectations from this type of project. There might be some other ideas if we're seeing these shifts in travel. If the public's agreeing that, yeah, if I have this route, I might be taken this way and see these shifts. There might be some good ideas for the public of what we might expect to see from the public and actual users. We're doing our best to model stuff, but when we get the actual public involved and see the actual behavior change, that's when we can see our best mitigation measures. So with that, we'd like, I'd like to shift to gentrification risks. This was a special request from council. Back, I believe, when we presented in October. So this was focused on the south side neighborhood. And the changing gentrification in that specific community. So economists did evaluate several different trends that we are seeing. We did look at both national trends, local demographic trends, and we did have a. A meeting with Dr. Guthrie with NAU and Ms. Deb Harris to talk about local trends from a local level of people who are in the community, know the community. Know the trends, understand what's going on, to really get a local understanding of what's going on. Provided really good valuable insight for experts. In general, the displacement they're seeing, well, let me step back and define gentrification. So gentrification is the displacement of existing residents. Or certain demographics over the long run. It's typically caused by. You know, a demand for housing exceeding supply, growth in housing costs or a change in the the cultural identity of a community typically driven by income and wealth. So that's generally what the major drivers for gentrification are. It can lead to a change in community culture and character. And it's, you know, it changes really the social and built in environment. It can be rapid, it could be slow, and generally when you do have redevelopment, it can tend to accelerate some of these trends that go into these neighborhoods. So like I said, we did reach out to Dr. Guthrie and and Ms. Ms. Harris and to get a better understanding. And we did identify several general trends that we that as a group, we identified as major drivers. And then we tried to evaluate, how does Lone Tree itself impact these drivers? Or is it aiding it? Is it mitigating it? Is it a no impact? Driver. So as a group, these are sort of the key risks. That we identified. The fourth is NEU's growth and expansion. You know, there's a high demand for student housing. I think we've all recognized that. And it's expanding into this community, the south side neighborhood as well. So how does Lone Tree Overpass contribute to this? Our thoughts and, you know, our economists felt it may help mitigate it by improving the network mobility. We're providing an alternate path and entryway through the downtown area and adjacent to NAU. Improve travel times. It gives students an opportunity to. Live maybe a little further away from campus and still make it to class on time. If we have changes to the San Francisco and Beaver and have those bike corridors and connectivity with the FUTS Trail, which is a very key part of the project. Have those connections built in, especially if the FUTS Trail extends north and then east-west where some plans are moving forward. You give students other options to be able to connect to the to the campus and the community. So we see this as a potential mitigation with the project and other projects that the city is working on long term. Another general risk item is the climate migration and short term rentals, second homes. These are the Airbnbs and and other elements where people are buying second homes, renting them out. So short term rentals, non-permanent residence. This is a medium risk for sure in this community. We're already starting to see people move in and out of town, people moving in and buying houses. And this is desirable neighborhood. There's a very walkable entertainment district right nearby. So how does Lone Tree impact this? It does improve access to the south side neighborhoods. So we do see it as a potential. It potentially facilitates the risk. So we do, because it does again, provide access to the area. It does encourage people to potentially move into the neighborhood. The Real Deflag Flood Control Project. This is a pretty critical project for the city. Major element of that is it will remove quite a big part of this neighborhood from the flood flood maps. So it's going to make the property more valuable. It's a pretty big project, pretty important project. Lone Tree, while it's working hand in hand, it's no direct impact. We are working directly with the Real Deflag Project. That project hopefully is going to occur with or without the Lone Tree project, and so we don't see it as a direct impact. The attractive neighborhood character. This is a very centrally located neighborhood. It's a high desirable neighborhood. So it's it's a medium impact overall. It's a medium risk overall. Lone Tree, and that's something we'll talk about later on. It may or may not. Cause cut through traffic, which may or may not improve. The livability. So it's sort of one of those. Contributions that's a little harder for us to judge. It could contribute, it could not contribute. The intent of Lone Tree is to provide an alternate access route to truly discourage the cut through traffic by improving the network. That's our goal of Lone Tree is to provide a north-south network that has a great separation with BNSF. And hopefully that's what commuters will use instead of cutting through the neighborhood. That's really one of our goals of the project. Demand for parking. This is a mixed risk. As we develop, if there's some high density especially or mixed density reuses and redevelopment, then you have an increased demand for parking. And that then spurs additional redevelopment. So we see that as potential risk mitigation. This is a mixed, you know, neighborhood with industrial uses. So there's definitely a chance for some redevelopment to going to go on. Lone Tree we see is a general low impact. We are providing improved network mobility for vehicles. So will potentially spur on some redevelopment in the area. We recognize that and see Lone Tree as a potential contributor to that. And then finally into redevelopment itself, it's a medium risk for south side. Which changes the neighborhood character by driving that redevelopment we mentioned. So Lone Tree providing that extra access is going to involve potentially some redevelopment or some potential redevelopment in the neighborhood. So it is a contributor to that. Overall, we identified three major summary points for gentrification. Overall, we identified three major summary points for gentrification, and this was part of our EIS, is that overall, we consider Lone Tree a low-impact gentrification. The trends are already in place. There are some items where Lone Tree will help accelerate some of these trends. There's also some trends that it helps mitigate and hinder a little bit. So there's some positives and minuses from Lone Tree itself towards gentrification, but the risks are, the underlying risks are already there. It's already at a medium, medium-high risk due to the desirable location and the general trends, as we mentioned. And the area drivers are really the largest risk for gentrification, with the proximity to NAU and downtown being the biggest drivers. So that's, that's where we came from. That's what we submitted to the city in our report. So that sort of completes the EIS section. I'm happy to pause here before we move on to Eldon if, if needed, or we can keep going forward.
Any questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. I'm wondering if we have done any outreach specifically to the businesses in, on the Beaver-San Francisco corridor area?
We have not done any specific business outreach. We've limited it to a small group discussion with Dr. Guthrie, Ms. Harris, experts who really understand the trends of the demographics.
As a business owner downtown, I'm not in that area, but I would want to know that this is coming. I would maybe want to change my business model. Hopefully, the pedestrian-bike traffic will even itself out pretty quick. But I, depending on what type of business it is, they may want to have that notice to kind of think, okay, you know, the car won't be driving by. Now I have a pedestrian or a bike, what can I do to capture that? That we do some outreach soon.
Our intent is to present this at the next public meeting, which is tentative for sometime in July, August. We wanted to be able to present this to Mayor and Council first. So that is part of our plan, and we are going to solicit feedback from the community as well. It's part of an education and then solicit for feedback campaign.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember House?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering if you can further explain, under the mitigation measures that you mentioned, the, the presentation of natural adjustments in business types. Because that was, it was a little confusing to me, as it sounded like a suggestion of, well, the businesses can just change to mitigate some of these concerns, which also sounds like instability then to the economic structure of that neighborhood or that area. So can you go into that and, and just explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, so I'll take a first shot, and Sophie, just to prepare you online, I may kick it to you as well. So it's, it's a natural adjustment we are talking about. It's not going to be a project-driven adjustment. It's going to be one that's reactive. Already in the downtown area, we're seeing the effect. These are mainly establishments that have, at least the ones we have identified and categorized. A lot of them are food and drink establishments, are hotels. Items like that are going to be more your destination-type businesses. So they're going to have less of an impact overall. There are some coffee shops and some other types of businesses that will see some opportunity drop. So it's, it's going to be those types of businesses that might see some of the pass-through traffic that will need to find a way to some offset. So it's whether finding a way to become more of a destination-type business to draw people in, or finding a way to more coordinate or encourage the multimodal uptick that we think we'll see with the offset and reduction in traffic, especially on Beaver and San Francisco, where we might encourage more bicyclists and peds to use, and then cater more to those. Maybe it comes to something where we see maybe some outdoor dining patio experience or something to drive, try, try to drive in those types of destination businesses. So it is a little bit of a combination of, there might be some city efforts that could help, but there's also some business efforts that could also offset. So Sophie, I don't know if you have, if you're online able to also add in?
I'm here. I think you covered it well, Jason.
Okay. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, it, it does somewhat. I think I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards some of what the Vice Mayor just presented in, in terms of, you know, recognizing that this wasn't necessarily presented to the, the businesses in the area. And I certainly appreciate the, the statement of outreach to Ms. Harris and Dr. Guthrie. But neither of them are business owners in that area. They certainly have a wealth of knowledge of that area, and I don't want to undervalue that. But because of this sort of economic impact that we're seeing in this shift and, and the impact to the businesses, and the, the idea of them having to then shift their business models to accommodate this, it's concerning to me to not see them included in the conversation, to talk more specifically about the impact to them, or at least give them that, that heads up.
Yeah, I completely understand. That's why our next step is to include them in the public information part of this project. We do have two public meetings still scheduled. We are still doing public outreach. But our priority was first to get it in front of Mayor and Council to notify you all here tonight, what our study was finding first, and then our public outreach was the next step as part of the project.
Oh, Councilmember Shmone?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Jason and Christine and teams. Good, good update. I, I really appreciate this presentation, Jason and Christine. This is some good data, and I, I really appreciate this insight. And Vice Mayor, I was thinking about you as I was preparing for today, thinking about what your comments might be about the business data that is being presented here in terms of the economic impact. And I, I definitely appreciate your comments and advocacy, and Councilmember House, I'm right there with you too. You know, this is kind of shows that levels of service are confusing, right? And A, Beaver maybe isn't always good for business, right? But F might be. But, um, yeah, I'm just glad we're having this conversation. Jason, I appreciate you bringing this to us first, and I look forward to that community engagement. Definitely support you teaming up with the DVA and working with those side-side businesses specifically. I appreciate you reaching out to Deb and, and Ricardo. That's, that's wonderful. And my comment really is just, you know, I love that we're talking about bike-ped and multimodal uptick in those, in those areas, and that we want to encourage more. And I'm just thinking, you know, what'd be really great, I remember former Deputy City Manager Shane Dill always telling me, Adam, the opportunity here is to take Beaver and San Fran and actually do something here as part of Lone Tree. And I was too focused on, on the number of lanes, right? But now that we're talking about this and the side effects, Jason, I guess my, my seed that I like to plant with you to, to, you know, bring back to us when you come back to us, is just the idea of, how do we really embrace and encourage more cyclists and pedestrians, given the change in driving patterns that we're expecting? You know, and, and I'm not just thinking about, you know, a thin sip of paint or green paint. I'm thinking about like that concerned-by-interested category of cyclists, which represents, I believe, 60% of the total population of Flagstaff. And they really need separated infrastructure, whether there's a buffer or a little, like, you know, those little flaps like we have, whatever it is. It might, it might take a lane, or it might take a parking lane. But that'd be wonderful. That'd be really the icing on the cake with this project, to me personally, if we could also work forward a plan to, you know, better enhance those, that infrastructure. And Mayor, I know you've talked about this too, and a lot of us have, and, and so just wanted to plant that seed. I think that's all I wanted to say. Yeah, it is. And I look forward to the conversation and the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shmone. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I don't know if Terry from the DVA or anyone from Discover Flagstaff is on the line, but I do see this as an opportunity to really do some advertising for this corridor being bike-ped friendly. It could change kind of our message for, for that area of downtown, and I think it's, it's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there anyone from Discover Flagstaff team who might want to respond or online?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Heidi Hansen, interim Deputy City Manager. Definitely listening to the conversation and very happy to implement anything that you need. And I've written those notes down, and I will share them with the team. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. With that, I think we're good to proceed.
All right, thank you. So our next topic is Eldon Corridor. As Christine mentioned, we are trying to get to a decision whether Eldon Corridor moves forward or not as part of this project. So what we plan on doing tonight is review the concept, identify the concerns and the project impacts, discuss potential mitigation if the corridor stays, because we do understand the neighborhood's concerns. And then hopefully request that we identify a path forward for the project, and I'll explain why and what we're tied to from a design concern. So Eldon Corridor was incorporated as part of the project, as part of Prop 420. You can see it's this green corridor. It does run from the west to the east side of the project, underneath the great separation of Lone Tree Road. So the bridge is in this blue area on the project, so it will run underneath the great separation. It was originally identified in the 2010 project assessment study, and then it was incorporated as part of the 420 plan. Back in the 2010, it was just, it was intended to provide the east-west connection between the two neighborhoods, because we are splitting the, the original neighborhood with the Lone Tree Road. Because we are elevated, this majority of this section red is going to be on retaining walls, providing a vertical barrier separation across the community and the industrial area. We'll get into the South Side Community Plan a little bit, they have a little bit changes. But as stated in 2010, it was conceived as a roadway only with no sidewalks. It was just to provide vehicular access. The 420 language adopted the roadway with the addition of the FUTS Trail along the north edge of the, the roadway. The FUTS Trail is not part of the 420, but it was developed during the schematic design of this project to be included. So that'd be a 10-foot path on the north side of the roadway, with a five-foot sidewalk on the south side, provide sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. To show you real quick, I can back out of here, conceptual look of what that would look like. This is schematic only, so it's not intended to be final designed, does not show the FUTS Trail, for example, on the north side, but this is becoming underneath the great separation, starting on the east side, looking west. We have about a 70-foot clearance from the abutment to where the Army Corps of Engineers right-of-way is. The pathway would take up, well, the FUTS Trail, roadway and sidewalk would take up approximately 40 foot of that through this corridor. And then we tie into the west side over in Eldon. So this sort of just a fly-through early from schematic, this has not been refined very much through design. So I was just sort of giving you a conceptual visualization of what it would look like. Going back to the presentation. So the South Side Community Plan, we did pull the exhibits from that plan, just to show you what their concepts were. So they did not have the continuation of Eldon Corridor from Eldon. They instead had just pathways, trail system, going underneath the project. And they had Lumber Street ending in a termination for one of their concepts. They had two different concepts. So they utilized trails through this corridor area. And then their second concept, had a parking lot on the, the east side, and then a trail system as well, with the concept of using maybe a sports court or basketball court underneath the bridge. So these are the figures that were developed during the South Side Community Plan. So we have a little bit of a discrepancy between what was passed in 420 and what the community plan that was adopted in 2020 was. So that's why we're sort of here tonight, to see how we move forward. The bridge that's currently laid out does provide enough vertical clearance for providing something like a sports court. But as I stated, if we do provide the roadway and the FUTS Trail that was shown in schematic, we only have about 70 feet between the bridge abutment and the Army Corps' right-of-way. It would take up about 40 feet of that zone, so we would not have as much space to provide some of these amenities in the South Side Community Plan. But you can see neither of the South Side Community Plans provide the vehicular access from the east and west sides either. It's just strictly multimodal access, east and west. All right, so community benefits for the Eldon Corridor. It does provide access for properties east of Lone Tree to eastbound Butler Avenue. So the biggest challenge for the community, for the properties in this parcel, and there's about four, or in this quadrant, and there's about four parcels that are going to be impacted that we're estimating, is getting onto eastbound Butler. They would have access to a right-out to get onto westbound Butler. And from there, they get to northbound or southbound Lone Tree. So it's really the eastbound Butler movement. They would have access off of lumber, but crossing what we anticipate being pretty heavy volumes on Butler could be difficult. It's providing them a secondary access from Eldon Corridor to Brennan, where they could enter Lone Tree and then make that left turn, or even go on up to Eldon, would be a little bit easier to get, to get into the eastbound Butler Avenue. So that's, that's the benefit for that quadrant. For residents west of Lone Tree, it does also support some continuity in access, and also helps facilitate some movements onto Lone Tree itself. Instead of having to make an eastbound Butler movement, they could use as a local access road, take a right-out onto Butler westbound, and then access Lone Tree northbound with right turns only, instead of having to make a left bound, a left-turn movement onto Butler. So there's a little bit of ease of access for west of Lone Tree residents as well. It also provides community access, who don't live in this neighborhood, access to improvements in the South Side neighborhood, whatever gets developed here. One of the two concepts did have a parking plan, so there would be some access in one of the concepts. But if, if one without a parking lot is provided, there's not really any access unless we have on-street parking, people parking in South Side neighborhood. And it also does provide additional access for parcels if we're going to get further development down here on east of Eldon Corridor. And I don't know why this isn't working for me, but... So the community challenges that we've heard based on feedback is the concern that Eldon Corridor would encourage cut-through traffic. So historically, right now, traffic does come up Lone Tree and goes on Colorado and cuts over Brennan, and then enters and passes through the neighborhood. So that's the current conditions. Providing Eldon Corridor could encourage, especially if we do see backup at the intersection, could encourage people to cut through and do pass-through through Eldon and go through the neighborhood, similar to the current conditions they are now. So that is a legitimate concern. We also have potential for truck traffic trying to bypass this intersection and using the same route. So there's a concern that truck traffic may be encouraged to go through the intersection. Same way with the opposite direction as well. It provides a bypass that should have less traffic and may encourage users who are local and know the backgrounds to use that instead of staying on the main roads. So those are the community concerns we've heard back as part of the project. To discourage that, if Eldon were to stay, and we want to discourage that, we do have some traffic calming strategies we could integrate as part of the project. Some of these are familiar to residents of Flagstaff. We could do dynamic speed display signs. This provides feedback directly on your speed. It does require either solar battery or electrical feed. One of the cons I listed here also is that it's a speed deterrent more than a traffic deterrent. It just slows people down, so you don't get the speeders coming through the traffic. One example of this is Butler, over near Butler and Fox Glen. There's an example of one of these speed signs. We can also use speed tables and crosswalks. South Side Plan does have this developing, developing, developing into like a park area. So this could encourage drivers to know, hey, this is a pedestrian-friendly area. We have people in the park. So we provide speed tables combined with crosswalks, like what you see in this top photo here, to slow people as they go through this corridor, and also highlight that, hey, we have pedestrians crossing here. I think this would be new to Flagstaff area, but it's something that a lot of other communities use. We could also use curb extensions, like you see down here. This example would be, there's a lot of these all over downtown. San Francisco and Phoenix has several of these. That's near where this photo was taken. Studies have shown that speed tends to, speed, tends to increase when you get long, straight-drive corridors. So by doing curb extensions, it narrows the roadway, narrows your visual focus. It tends to slow people down. So that's really what's driving, or the thought behind doing the curb extensions. Speed humps also not typically used in Flagstaff, but I think we're all familiar with what these are, speed bumps, speed humps. Just naturally slows people. People also don't like to drive on them, so it may discourage some of the pass-through traffic. It does have a long-term impact on maintenance on vehicles, though. So generally, the trend has been to move away from speed bumps and speed humps, just because there is a maintenance component on users of the roadways who have these. Raised median islands, again, common to Flagstaff. This picture is from San Francisco and Elm Avenue. Again, it's a narrowing of the street. It's also a slight deflection angle, so instead of going straight, you have to deflect around the island. Also provides a nice landscaping opportunity to, or other artwork, or some other beautification opportunity for the roadway. And then the opposite of that would be a pinch point where you actually squeeze the roadway in, make it real narrow. So even to the point where you could have alternating traffic, we'd have to really slow down and yield to each other. So those are all opportunities. We could calm traffic. A lot of these would more slow down, but at the same time, if you're slowing people down, they may just stay on the main road. Because the real benefit of cut-through is you can get to your destination faster. So you get the combination of slowing people down, and then you discourage the cut-through traffic with these. So these would be options we could use if Eldon stays, but we want to discourage and mitigate some of the cut-through traffic. And so with that, that's all I have to present. Oh, no, there's another slide, sorry. Sorry, this is not working. So from a design perspective, just to clarify what Eldon impacts. So the biggest impact is drainage design. Right now, we're working with the Army Corps of Engineers on the Rio de Flag project. We have connections that go into the Rio de Flag project, and we're working with them in accelerating our drainage design, so we can avoid what's called a 408 permit. If they can incorporate some of our drainage elements, we can avoid several months of obtaining a federal permit. It also requires extensive environmental reviews. And so we're trying to accelerate our drainage design to meet their schedule, which is anticipated to go in at the end of July, early August. Having this road or not having this road is an impact. Anytime we put new pavement on the ground, we increase the runoff of a drainage area. Also, any grading we do changes existing drainage patterns. And so us knowing whether or not this road stays or goes impacts our drainage design and how we're coordinating with the Corps. So it's a pretty big impact for our drainage design. Roadway design, obviously, if it stays or goes, and how we tie in with driveways. Circulation patterns for parcels that are to remain, some of the access for some of these parcels and how they get in and out. Fire and police access, whether we have to provide turnarounds for fire trucks. Those are all being impacted by whether or not this corridor stays. Utility design, right now, we're currently in talks with Lumen and APS doing sewer and water. Typically sewer and water stays within the roadway corridor. There are some parcels we're looking at feeding potentially from the north side, which would be off of Eldon. If Eldon goes away, we have to re-look at those utilities. So we did get our final design contract back in March, and we are proceeding with final design. And these are three pretty big elements that we're starting to run into a pause until we get a decision on this corridor. So that's why we're here tonight, asking for direction and thoughts of where we're headed with it. So where we're leading is we can proceed with Eldon Corridor. We do have some adjustments we'd have to still make. We're still trying to adjust and miss some parcels and try to minimize impacts to parcels. And then we can, if it does stay, we can evaluate traffic calming to try to mitigate some of the concerns the community has expressed, or we can remove Eldon Corridor from the project. So that's where we like to leave the council with. I'm happy to answer any design-related questions or impacts as well. That's the end of our presentation this evening on Eldon.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We do have a couple of public participants that we'll take before we turn in for discussion. Starting with Jesse Sensobar.
Good evening. Some of you know me. The rest of you are lucky. I'm here, I own one of those four parcels that's east of the proposed overpass that's going to lose access to our current safe access to Butler Avenue, which is down Brennan westbound and then taking a left onto what's going to be Lone Tree. And once we lose that, the Eldon Corridor becomes pretty critical to us as far as getting in and out. And so I just urge you to take that into consideration when you're thinking about that. If this goes to a strictly walking path, we're going to be pushed. We're going to, there are three businesses on my property currently, a towing company, an auto repair company, and a landscaping company. And if the Eldon Corridor doesn't happen, we're going to be pushed into circling through the mixed-use property on the south side of Butler in order to access our property, which isn't super safe, you know. But in addition, you know, it makes that property a whole lot harder to run businesses out of. And my property alone, there, you know, between those three businesses, that's 25 jobs that all pay considerably more than minimum wage here in town. So I'd just like you all to keep that in mind as you're planning for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. We have one online, and you can please tap in.
Mayor and Council, I have David Hayward. David, you may address Mayor and Council. David, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. David, could you please try again?
Hi there, I'm trying to do a sound check. I couldn't get through before.
Great, we can hear you now. Please go ahead.
Everyone, hello?
Yep, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Hello, check, check.
David, can you hear us?
We can hear you. We can hear you, David. You are welcome to proceed, if you can hear me.
Sorry, Matt, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize for that, guys. This is David Hayward. Most of you know me, but I do own about, probably about 50% of the property that was mentioned in the presentation. So that's the area between the overpass in red and the Eldon Street extension in green. Obviously Jesse, who just spoke, owns the other part of it. I was a member of the South Side Stakeholder Group that helped write the South Side Community Plan. And ever since that happened, say, three years ago, I've wondered what the purpose of this street is. And quite frankly, it is so that, you know, the people who lease on Jesse's property do not have to make a difficult left on Butler. There's no other purpose to it. You know, Jesse's a great guy, and, you know, the tenants that work out of there are great people. But we do have to look to the future. This road and this overpass are going to be here for the next generation, not just the folks who lease there right now. And I encourage you to ask the consultants, you know, exactly how much are we going to spend on this one road, so that, you know, one property owner doesn't have to make a difficult left. It's a, you know, it's as simple as that to me. This just doesn't seem to make sense. I don't really have a dog in the fight. I'm sorry to Jesse that it will, you know, potentially negatively impact his tenants, but I just think that this is a waste of the city's money, and we could, we could much better spend this elsewhere on, you know, priorities for the city and priorities for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do understand we have one more commenter jumped on as well, so.
Mayor and Council, I have Mike Tullis. Mike, you may go ahead and address Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Vice Mayor and Council members for taking the time to address this. I'm a multi-generational City of Flagstaff member, as is my family. I'd like to commend you on taking the lead for the thoughtful development of this area. And we can see what happens when you don't do anything for the development for a certain area of Flagstaff. It's, this area will benefit utilities, streets, sidewalks, streetlights, possible basketball courts, bike lanes, trails, access to trails, access to NAU, access to downtown and flag. I think that all these points are in the flyer that the City of Flagstaff generated. I'd like to commend you for taking point on this, in this development piece. Appreciate your time. That's all I have. Thank you very much. I'll watch for the rest of your decision.
Thank you, Mike. All right, just to confirm, that was the last public participant? Okay. All right, Council, do we have questions, comments regarding this? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm wondering if we did any outreach to the South Side community, particularly with the Eldon Corridor.
We had a public meeting back in, I want to say, September, October of last year, and we provided multiple, or we received multiple comments with concerns about mobility through this corridor. We did have multiple concerns about how people would get around this area. No direct feedback if people were in favor or against the Eldon Corridor, though. There wasn't no comments that I remember receiving that were in favor of it going away or staying.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, sure. I'll be brief here at the start, just to kick things off and to sort of telegraph where I'm thinking on this. Jesse, I really appreciate you being here. I really do. I thank you for weighing in, for participating, and for your advocacy for the interests that you represent. I do have to say, pretty point-blank, though, I agree with Mr. Hayward on this. I'm not sure that the Eldon Corridor road is justifiable for the taxpayer. And also, it's unfortunate that we can't, it seems like what I'm hearing is we can't have both the park amenities and the corridor in that space. And I need to prioritize the park amenities. It's long overdue for this community and that region, and I think those elements are very important. And also, I just, this is an aside, so I'm kind of switching gears here real quickly. And I believe this has come up in some of our beautification discussions before. But you showed that virtual video, which I just loved. I wish we had something like that for every angle on every capital project we're doing. Makes me feel like I'm playing an Xbox game. It's a very immersive and very nice tool for us to have for visualization. And I noticed the space, it looked like it could be, become a giant mural or art project for the city. And I'm looking forward to those conversations. Just as an aside for how to, whether we move forward as a council on the corridor or not, how to, how we're going to have fun with that space. I'll leave my comments there for now. I look forward to the discussion we're having up here.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember McCarthy?
I'll just point out that we've talked about two options. One is proceed with Eldon Corridor. The other is remove Eldon Corridor. Well, there's a third option, which would be put a foots path in there. In other words, bicycle and pedestrian path, which would be far less impact than a road. And it would promote pedestrian and bicycle traffic without the problems associated with putting a new road in there.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember House?
I just wanted to circle back to some of the gentrification impact conversation. Because what's confusing me at this point is the, basically, the assessment under that section that said that there was low impact. When, in my reading of that presentation, there were four out of six areas contributing to, potentially, to the gentrification of that neighborhood. And then, in looking at this Eldon Corridor impact, two of those are heightened by that. It's the potential of the pass-through traffic and some of the industrialization of the area with the potential of trucks running through that residential area. So was that gentrification study done considering the Eldon Corridor, or was that done separate from this?
Gentrification included the concept that you're seeing on the screen, which included Eldon Corridor. Generally, when we look at a project like Lone Tree, we look at it at a network level. So generally, when we do an arterial road, we feel people are going to stay on the arterial roads. To use Eldon Corridor as a cut-through traffic, the people who are going to be using those types of roads are going to be your local users. They're not going to be your weekend users, your tourists, your commercial from out of state, out of city. They're not going to know to use this road as a cut-through traffic. So that's where we said, I believe on the cut-through, it was a may reduce. It's one of those hearts. Local users may know this route. They may know to cut through. Non-local users are going to stick to the arterial roads. They have a nice grade-separated crossing with Lone Tree Road over BNSF. The cut-through traffic would be going to San Francisco or Beaver, and there's a grade, at-grade crossing with BNSF where you're potentially stopped at BNSF. So that's where we said it's sort of a mixed use with the cut-through traffic. It's, we think there's going to be an overall reduction, because right now, the current encouragement's coming north on Lone Tree, up Colorado, and you go right over Brennan, and there's a natural movement. This project cuts that off, but now by introducing this corridor, local users will still know about it, and you still might have some. So it's not a complete elimination of cut-through traffic. It's just a modification with local users, if that makes sense. Hopefully I clarified that.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. I think still, overall, you know, I'm really struggling with some of the, I guess, the confusion that exists around the presentation of the Eldon Loop Road connection. Because it's been presented as part of that Prop 420. Yet, in reading through it, there is not specific reference to it, correct? It's talking about the road connections is what's referenced there. Am I correct?
Mayor, Council, yeah, it has one sentence in the pamphlet language that says that road connections underneath the overpass will be completed. It does not say Eldon Loop Road, but this is the only road that really fits that description. So you're correct.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Waiting for Shimoney to pop on here, but.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
I'm practicing sitting back more. I'm trying, Mayor and Council and staff. Mayor, you want me to jump in?
Yeah, please go ahead. I have a couple of questions as well, but go right ahead.
You know, Mayor, I don't have much. Jason and Christine, again, thank you. And I'm just, you know, enjoying the conversation we're having and just listening to my colleagues speak and bring up their points. I like to see us prioritize bike pad here. I like the South Side's plan, especially the one with the basketball courts. That excites me. And, you know, when we're talking about the pros and cons here and the trade-offs, you know, it makes me think about my many conversations with Martin. with Martin, which will, he'll say things like, who's benefiting and, and who's giving something up? And it's just, it's always a trade-off game, and you can never please everybody. And I do feel for those, those businesses and, and that employer and those employees. But I believe the South Side neighborhood would greatly benefit from this, this corridor being a foots and a bike pad with the park. And, and that excites me. And it just, I'm just excited that it sounds like Council's heading in that direction as well. So I'll just add that, and I appreciate everyone's efforts here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. I had a couple of questions. One, Councilmember House touched on, which was the information pamphlet, because I was trying to read it through completely. I was, I only found that one little bit. So I also had a question. What is the cost of this corridor if we build it? Because we are over budget with this project as it stands now.
Yeah, so I, we haven't fully developed this cost. Tried to text my roadway lead and contractor. Chris, I don't know if you're still online, if you have that broken out as a, as a specific cost. I don't see it's in the.
Jason, yeah, I don't believe we've evaluated that as a specific cost yet, just because we're looking at developing this versus a foots trail versus a roadway and what they wanted on the roadway and stuff. But we could easily put something together.
Yeah, so we could quickly develop something if that information's needed, but because we haven't developed it fully, I don't know if we have a fully broken out cost for this specific section of roadway.
Okay. Thank you. Because that, that is one consideration. If we are, this is a large project and a lot of money. We are already very heavily over. So I think that is a strong consideration of mine as we have this discussion. Others. Councilmember McCarthy?
I want to address the comment that in the brochure, it said that there would be an under, road under there. And I read that. Yeah, it's there. However, it's just sort of like as an aside, it's not the focus of this project by any means, in my mind. So I think, well, I think I could go into all kinds of scenarios. I'm thinking, if you were in such and such a place, how would you get to such and such another place? Without getting into that, I think I'm leaning towards putting in a foots trail and not putting in a road. So pedestrians, bicycles, yes, but a road, no. And, you know, the cut-through traffic is a real concern. And, you know, trucks going through there, a lot of traffic going through there. You know, I'm a liaison to the Traffic Commission, and, and we just like almost every month hear a discussion about, how do we get rid of this cut-through traffic? In La Plaza Vieja, we're doing all kinds of things to stop cut-through traffic. So here's an example of where we can save money, have a, a really good path for pedestrians and, and bicycles, and get rid of some cut-through traffic. And I admit that there are a little difficulty getting out of these parcels on the east side of the new bridge. And, but I, in my mind, kind of thought, okay, you could do it in certain ways. It isn't like we're gonna be completely cutting them off by any means. Anyway, that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Salz?
I have a few comments, but I'll start with a question. Can you please rewind to corridor history, about the Eldon Corridor history? Okay. So, you know, these three bullet points just, just illustrates how the quote-unquote Eldon Corridor has evolved. In 2010, it started as a roadway-only, no sidewalk. And then it was somehow integrated into Prop 420 language, roadway with Flagstaff Urban Trail System trail on north side, not part of Prop 20, but developed during schematic design. Then, of course, more recently, it's the South Side Community Plan where it says, local paths only. Can you expound on the phrase, local paths only? Does it, does it include vehicle, or does it focus on pedestrian and bicyclists? And of course, I, I remember when Council deliberated on and approved the South Side Community Plan where it showed a civic, a civic space and potential pocket park, neighbor slash neighborhood park slash basketball court, and potential place for gathering and marketplace. So please explain the local paths only, as indicated in that screen.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go back to, so this shows the, the keyboard's not working. But this shows the concepts pulled from the South Side Community Plan. These are showing a trail system. I don't recall specifically from this plan if these are defined as foots trails, sidewalk pass, or DG pass. To be honest with you, I don't remember offhand right now. They are not intended to be vehicular paths. They are meant to be for, for pedestrians. They might be paved for bicyclists as well. I'd have to go back to the plan and look for that. So this is the first exhibit. You see they have a connection from Brennan and then over to Lumber. And then the next, they did have a parking lot, and then they had an east-west connection mainly, and then a, at Brennan. So a multi-circle route, like you see a normal park system. So these were not intended for vehicles, maybe for maintenance vehicles, but not for vehicular access for local residents.
Thank you so much for that response. I am leaning toward developing this area as reflected on South Side Community Plan. Promoting pedestrian walkability, accessibility through bicycling and walking, and also developing that space for civic, civic space, potential recreation area, place of gathering, and public art. I am very mindful of the cost, Mr. Mayor. As we all know, most construction projects now have, have doubled and will be tripled in the next year due to, due to many, many variables such as supply chain and workforce shortage. Though I am actively involved in bringing in at least 2.6 million to this project with my role with Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salz. Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, we have spent a lot of time talking about traffic safety at Lone Tree and Butler for bicycles and pedestrians. So if we do add a bicycle pedestrian path underneath the bridge, that'll be, a lot of people could, you know, bicyclists and pedestrians could avoid that intersection completely and have an extremely safe route underneath the bridge. So that's another reason that I'm leaning the way I am.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, I will just say, it does sound like we have direction now already for no road. Do you wanna jump in here?
Yeah, I do. I just, I kind of wanted to paint the picture going forward with what we're hearing. We still need to make sure that these parcels are served by utilities. And so this road was gonna serve as a utility corridor. We're gonna have to do work and see how else we can get utilities to these parcels. It, it may look like the same type of alignment as the roadway, but instead of the roadway, we put utilities and we put a foots path instead. The, the one thing, we don't really have plans or funding for the future civic space. That foots, if we put it in with our project, is basically gonna go nowhere and, and kind of empty out onto Butler. I mean, there's, I know that this is a concern probably from, from Jeff and Martin Ents. Not saying that we can't do, you know, what you're directing us to do, but the, the benefits and, and what you'll see was probably maybe a longer-term type of game. So I did, I did wanna kind of mention that, the timing on it.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, Councilmember McCarthy?
So I presume that if we put in a foots path, that it could basically be the whole length of this green line that's on the, not this chart, but the other chart. And I understand utilities could be problematic to some point. Yes, that chart. I'm assuming that we could build a foots path that goes the full length of that green line, or something similar to that. It wouldn't have to be the same as that. But in other words, it would connect all the way through. Is that true? And my point is, that would be way cheaper than building a road.
So the, the foots concept through this area is that they, there's a foots that's gonna hug the south side of the Rio, going all the way to where it crosses at the Butler Tunnel. This is in long-term planning for them. It doesn't necessarily take that bend to the south and pop right out onto Butler. It goes further, further to the east along the Rio to Flag.
Okay, okay. But there would be some way for a pedestrian or a bicyclist to get through. They might have to jog a couple of streets left or right or something, but they could get through. It wouldn't be dead-ended, would it?
Right. When they, I, I think it would serve westbound foots traffic better than eastbound foots traffic, because if you're going westbound on Butler and you're on a bike, or on foot, you're on a sidewalk, or you're on the bike lane, you can hit this and get off of Butler and, and go into the cottage in Eldon, that dog leg there. If you're coming to the east, then, you know, you're on, you're on the foots, and then you hit, you hit Butler. And so to go further east, you're gonna have to cross the street to get into the appropriate bike lane, if you're a bicycle. Or you're gonna just ride your bike on the sidewalk. I mean, that, that area of Butler is not really conducive to, to crossing. But until you get to, like, Sawmill.
Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. And Christine, really good, interesting points you're making. I really appreciate that level of detail here and concern for the, the movement of cyclists. And Councilmember McCarthy, I appreciate your creativity and your thought here. I, I think you bring up some interesting points, but it's a little bit more complicated, as Christine's saying, too. Christine, quick question. So, you know, I know something that engineers do with projects is, I, I forget the correct terminology, but some kind of cost-benefit, where they weigh out different, you know, costs and different benefits and different goals. And I guess my question is, you know, assuming, let's say Council wanted to pursue a road here. I have no idea what that might cost. I would, I would hate to even guess, but let's just say it's a couple of million dollars. I, I have no idea. But, and if we said, okay, you know, never mind, we don't want to do a road, let's do, do the foots. Let's just say we had 1.2 million extra at the end of the day, or whatever that balance might be from that road savings. Is there not a way to utilize those funds for the, a, a park?
Councilmember Shimonie, I, I would think that those funds would go into the overage that we're seeing on the construction escalation for the overall project. There, there wasn't any park or civic space contemplated in the bond. And I think that's where we would get caught.
Okay, I see. That's interesting. Okay, bummer. I guess I'll have to keep thinking creatively, creatively about how to fund this park, but I'd love to see that through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. With that, I don't hear direction fully for a foot specifically right away with this project. I am hearing that we are, that we do not want to make it a road. That's what I'm hearing, just to help clarify and give direction. Councilmember McCarthy?
So it sounds like we've decided not to have a road. Have we decided to not have a pedestrian path, call it foots, or call it sidewalk, or something? Is that a decision for later?
I, I think we'll, we'll take a look at where the utilities need to go first. And, you know, I would hate to plan a, a foots path and then construct it and not knowing what the civic space is, what South Side wants. So we've got a little bit of the chicken and the egg here. But I think the utilities is the most important part, you know, to move forward with.
Well, I agree that you're gonna have to move forward with utilities first. But I mean, if there were a civic space down there, it would seem that you could have a pedestrian path through there. Maybe it's not a foots trail. Maybe it's just a sidewalk, but a way that people could walk under the bridge and get over into that neighborhood in the west and migrate through the streets and hit San Francisco Street at some point. I, I mean, I think it would be crazy to, to build this in a way that there was no pedestrian path under the bridge. Civil, civic space or no civic space.
Well, that's gonna be the decision we can look at a later time. I mean, this is really for designs that they need to put together for July. You were saying something to that effect. So I think this is enough direction now from Council. And I would personally like to learn a little bit more and talk to Martin Ents potentially on how this fits into our larger framework of our ATMP for this particular area, or there may be other areas that we need to prioritize for that type of expenditure. So I'm not feeling comfortable moving forward with the foots aspect of this, but I think we have, we are, have an agreement regarding not putting a road right there.
Mr. Mayor, technically, the way it's posted, it was just about the Eldon Loop Connection. It wasn't about whether or not there should or shouldn't be a foots. So you're spot on as far as moving forward and discussing that later.
Thank you, Sterling. All right, Councilmember McCarthy?
Key words. This, we will discuss it later.
We'll put one foots in front of the other.
One foots. Oh, and the dad jokes come out.
I just had one more, I guess, notification for Council and the public. We will be back before you on June 7th to talk about the Butler and Lone Tree intersection and those alternative designs. And we also are planning that public meeting for probably the third week in July. And we haven't landed on a date yet, but we'll be covering the economic impact study. We'll be covering the public art beautification, and we'll be covering the update on the intersection design in, in that public meeting. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Now, that brings us down to agenda item number nine, the discussion in possible direction of current fair items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I know that you all are not used to seeing me on this side of the screen. I'm Stacy Phobar, your Deputy City Clerk, here to talk about our fair item update. First, we wanted to give a little bit of history on our future agenda item request process. Fairs are the process by which a council member may ask to have an item placed on a future agenda for discussion. Fairs should be limited to possible policy formulation and not as a means of attaining information or making a political statement. A council member may submit an item for consideration in a public meeting during to and from. Also, just a reminder, we will be going into more detail on this in the next presentation during our council retreat in January. The support of three council members is needed for an item to be placed on a future agenda for discussion and possible direction or action by a majority of council. Fairs are placed in a queue based upon the order that they are received. Items may be expedited by a majority of council. Periodic check-ins with council to review the fair item list and bring attention to any workload or time concerns are provided. This is just a example of our current fairs. I have the very current updated list available as well, and I will go ahead and switch to that. Pardon me for, pardon me for scrolling. And I scrolled too far. There we go. All right. So on our list for a vote of three is Councilmember Aslan's Discover Flagstaff update on the state of the film industry of Flagstaff. That is currently slated for June 7th, 2022. We are seeking council direction of four vote on these items. The first is by Councilmember Shimonie, a discussion on the city's engineering standards. Next one is by Mayor Deasy, development of a rainbow-colored pedestrian crosswalk. Councilmember Aslan, a development of a council evaluation process. Mayor Deasy, housing program for elderly citizens to have an assisted roommate. From previous Vice Mayor Daggett, a discussion regarding ordinance to protect renters from income, income source discrimination. income, income source discrimination. Mayor Deasy, legal violations of permittees as grounds to suspend or terminate building permits for public construction contracts. Also by Mayor Deasy, apprenticeship requirements for public construction contracts. Again, by Mayor Deasy, a development of an only dig once policy to allow for other utilities to participate in projects. Councilmember Salas is a discussion about bringing back the city-owned parcel at Schultz Pass to the list of properties to be developed for workforce housing. And then finally, we have a citizen petition that you all just heard on climate emergencies, stop the money pipeline.
Excellent. Thank you. And we do have one public participant, I understand, so I'd be happy to take that before we go into discussion.
Mayor and council, I have Celia. Celia, you may go ahead and address mayor and council. Celia, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address mayor and council.
Oh, Mayor and council, this is Celia Barretts, and I just wanted to mention that I haven't been able to find the agenda item for the vintage proposed amendment, fourth amendment to the DA. And since it's proposed for the 31st, I was going to ask you if you would postpone it for a week so that the public has a chance to review the document before you decide what you are going to do. So that's my comment. Thank you for taking it.
Thank you, Celia.
Ms. Barretts, that would be a public participation item, so thank you very much. We will put it under that area.
All right, thank you. With that, happy to turn it on to council and city manager, if you want to jump in.
Thank you, Mayor. As a matter of background on this, a couple of years back during a retreat when the council at that time was looking at the fair tabulation, very similar to what you have in front of you, but at that time it was much larger, there was a lot of discussion at that time. We had gotten kind of backlogged with with the fair items, and and we had a very good discussion with council in that retreat. One of the outcomes of that discussion, and some of you will recall this, was to have periodic check-ins on the fair items, just to see what's in the queue, and that is the very purpose of tonight's presentation. So just backdrop for you.
Thank you, city manager. All right, council, well, this is our opportunity to discuss potential prioritizations of this, and I definitely have a suggestion of myself. I know a lot of these are mine, and I could, and appreciate everyone helping to get it across the first hurdle, but there is one on this list. Yep.
Mayor Sterling has comments.
Yep.
Oh, thank you. Just as a clarification, when a fair is requested, it goes into a queue, and it is in that queue unless the council at that time asks for it to be expedited up to the front of all of the fairs. So the way they were presented here, correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy, but I believe that's chronologically how they fell into the queue, correct?
Yes, it is.
So we wouldn't be able to reprioritize one over another with the way the rules of procedure are written. I just want to make sure that's clear.
So, sorry, say that again, but if they're in a queue, it's, that's ones we go down to.
We take it one at, one at a time in the way that they're in that queue, the way the rule is written.
Okay.
Yes, and then additionally, Mayor, staff is taking the time right now to go ahead and prepare information, and they might come back with questions for you all on what you all would like to see for, sorry, I'm sounding very southern tonight with y'all, what you would like to see with that presentation.
Okay, thank you. So we do have the possibility, though, to move something to the top of the list with the council majority vote.
No, the way the rule was written, it's at the time that the fair came to the council, and if council had, if the person was requesting it be expedited at that time, that's when it was moved to the front. There is no provision in the rule to move one to the front. That's.
So it would have had to be done when we originally.
Correct.
Put the fairs forward.
Correct.
Okay. Well, with that, we don't have much to vote on then, but happy to discuss. Councilmember Salas.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Solomon, please correct me if I'm wrong. So the question at hand is if, if we decide to remove anything.
That, that's another way you can look at it. If there were three council members in favor of removing any of the fairs, you could discuss that, as well as who specifically from staff you may have been looking to. You could address that to the city manager as far as who you were hoping to get information from on that specific fair. If you see somebody's name up there on the list that you weren't thinking that was the division that would be addressing this, now would be the time to bring that up if you thought it was going to be somebody else addressing it.
That was said way, way more succinctly than I could state it.
All right, council member.
I have a comment. This is a very specific and also incidental at the same time, but there's a high likelihood that I will miss the council meeting on June 6th or 7th.
7th.
And I, I, I'm, I'd like to understand a little bit better. I think I understand this, but I'd like it explained a little bit better so everybody understands why something I brought up just last week is going to be scheduled for discussion on June 7th. But.
I can provide that clarification really quickly.
Okay, yeah, go for it.
It's not scheduled for discussion. It's scheduled to determine whether two others support.
Gotcha.
Moving it.
Okay.
To the very bottom of that list you see up there that have all been.
Well, thanks for the further clarification. That makes total sense. And I just want to state, you know, I'm, I'm going to do everything I can to be at that meeting on the 7th, but I may not be there. And I, I was thinking we might be going forward with an actual discussion on that topic. So my concerns really aren't here or there at this moment. I trust council will be able to possibly come up with three votes in my absence. I do think it's going to be a worthy conversation, and really not that urgent, just something that I'd like to see happen. And so I appreciate that consideration. My other thoughts on that are irrelevant at this point, so I'll leave it there.
City manager.
Sorry, if, go. I was going to, it's more of a question than a comment. I'm, I'm wondering if, since this is a, a matter of just seeing if there are three votes to advance it, I don't think there's any significance to this being on the June 7th agenda. It could be a week later, but either Sterling or Stacy can correct me on that. That, that way you can be present to help explain why you would like to see it.
Yeah, I think it would be best for you to, yeah, we, we can, we can kick it a week for sure. Yeah, Councilmember McCarthy.
So I guess I'm trying to figure out what we can do tonight, or why we even have this on the agenda.
I can clarify, and it's really stated very clearly in the executive summary, the, the item is on the agenda to determine whether or not you want to keep the queue as it is or remove any items from the queue. Those are, the queue is as it's stated, as it's shown up there. If you want to remove any, should there be a desire to remove any items from the, the queue, the fair discussion schedule, a majority of council would need to provide that direction.
So we can't change the priority, but we can remove things.
Correct. That's why it doesn't discuss prioritization at all in the staff summary.
Okay, that's clear. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is a tough discussion, and it always is, and I'm grateful that we have these updates. City manager, I, I think they're, they're worthwhile, and it's good to check in. You know, I, I, I'm very consciously trying not to add many things to this list, as you can tell by my name on this list. Mayor, you've brought up the queue length in the past to me, and, and, and we all understand how long this is. There's a couple of these that I feel like can overlap in, in conversation, and I know that city manager's probably thinking about that as well, to, to try and knock out a couple of these faster. There's some that, you know, I feel like I could potentially let go of today, but, you know, I know this is extremely awkward and challenging to have this conversation, and we all want to be very respectful to our, each other, right? I remember Coral always saying when she was our mayor, you know, council, you don't have to be so nice about, about these things to each other when someone brings up a fair, you know, but I think we all just care about what each other cares about and wants to give it the, the light of day to have that conversation. But, um, so I, I don't know, you know, if, if I really care to start going into each of the ones I feel like we can remove. It's a little uncomfortable for me to start picking apart what other people have put on this list. I'd say if anyone who has a agenda item on this list is a fair item that they feel like could be removed, I definitely would love to hear from you, the one who's championing each of these, if, if there's any that you think we could remove, or if city manager, if there's any of these that you think we could tie into any agendas that you see coming in the horizon to, to help clear some of these lists. You know, I'll just go ahead and plug mine, the oldest one on here. I, I don't think I put this on here right away, but after a while of seeing a lack of discussion about these points that I kept bringing up about priorities, I was like, all right, I'm back, I'm back against the wall. I'll throw it on the fair list because that's my only resort. And so, city manager, I don't know when we're going to have the, the conversation around priorities and values around engineering, but man, I think it's appropriate. And Vice Mayor, you brought it up a few weeks ago and how you'd like to have that conversation. So, city manager, anything you can do to help elevate this discussion to us sooner, I think will help all of us in our difficult conversations about capital. It's just be good to have our priorities set. They are to a degree today, and I think we need to change them. I guess I'll leave it at that, Mayor. I don't know how much it really helped the discussion, but, um, yeah, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Well, we can move right along here if, if there's no other comments or questions on this. I will just note, though, that I'm going to be bugging you about the only dig once policy a bunch. Well, we have, with all the infrastructure costs keep rising and rising and rising, this is a creative way that can save the city millions of dollars, and I would like to see if, you know, while we're facing these issues, I feel that's one that's going to be relevant with all the infrastructure work we need to do.
May I respond?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. If there are opportunities to advance these because there's another agenda item that covers the same topic or something close enough to where it might make sense, that was another outcome of that retreat, is that we, at the staff level, will do what we can to keep these moving, and, and if they can be addressed without having to be in the fair queue, we'll do that from time to time. Certainly, if we, to your example, on the, the dig once policy, if we see that being a kind of a companion discussion to something else that is, is coming to the council, yeah, that's definitely a possibility. And the, the idea, again, in presenting these to you tonight was not necessarily to invite you to delete any of them, but rather just to let you know what's in the queue. Again, going back a few years ago, or two, two years ago, we, we were considerably backlogged. The matrix was about three or four times the size of this now, and, and so it was very instructive to, to have that check in. This is manageable. So it's, it's just a, a quick visual for you to see what's in the queue and when it's likely to come, and rest assured that we'll move these items as fast as we can. And Councilmember Shimonie, your comments are, are well taken and, and well stated. I think the discussion of engineering standards and the, the many other accompanying items to that topic related to transportation planning is, is something that we have heard enough input from council in the, in the community that that would happen on its own, but the fact that it's in a fair queue just probably gives it even more formality and is probably not a bad idea that it's there, and it's, and it's the next one up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy.
So the citizen petitions, is there any limit on them? Can those, they might be six months before we get to it?
So with a citizen petition, it comes under the charter, and it has to be, once it's submitted, it has to be heard and determined whether this council will move forward with further discussion of that at some point, but that has to happen within 30 days under the charter.
But the next step could take a year.
The next step, it falls into the queue, and whenever it comes up in the queue is, is when it's heard. Mayor and council, I was taught long ago to own a mistake when I make one, and I am looking at Rule 4.02, Future Agenda Item Request, subsection C, which does indicate that should a council member wish to change the order of the items in the discussion queue, a request must be made by a council member as to the preferred priority order. Should a minimum of four council members agree to such a request, the order shall be revised accordingly, and I honestly do not remember when that went in, but you can change the order. I, I apologize. I own that, and I apologize.
No problem. Well, with that, I mean, a lot of these, though, are different departments that staffed differently, so trying to prioritize, for example, something that's being worked on in engineering versus something that can also be worked on in tandem in housing, et cetera, seems to be, I mean, it's not like it's going to check this off the box before we go to the second one. It's all being assessed by different departments. So I'm, I'm not sure if that's super necessary unless everybody wants to prioritize only dig once. But at this point, I think we can, we can move on.
That's your call.
All right. Any other comment? All right, then let's, let's get a move on here then. We are down to agenda item 10, City Council Duties and Responsibilities Refresher.
Terrific. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm sure you guys will be sick of hearing me speak in just a few minutes. Again, we will dive deeper into all of these issues at the council retreat in early January. Both Sterling and I will be presenting on this item. This is just a refresher and a high overview of the role of staff, the role of council, and the duties of both. So the role of staff is for expertise, experience, and institutional knowledge. We are the experts, and we are here to assist council in the best ways possible. We assist council in setting community priorities, implement the council policy decisions, oversee and run operations of the city. So that is administering the city budget, managing personnel, the emergency services, law enforcement, court administration, oversee utilities, infrastructure and facilities, providing community outreach and engagement, community development, and economic vitality. We did want to talk about agendas and how they are prepared. So packet preparation is an ongoing process that spans the course of multiple weeks, sometimes even longer. Agenda packets are intended to provide the information needed for council to make informed decisions. Packets are created and distributed digitally, excuse me. We distribute them on Friday afternoons in preparation for the following Tuesday meeting. Draft agendas are distributed one week prior to the meeting, along with a work session agenda, and this allows council an opportunity to review materials and present any questions before the meeting. So as you know, next week is a work session, so we will be releasing the agenda for next week on Friday, as well as the draft agenda for June 7th's meeting. Now, the one thing that we all really care about, council recess, is approximately six weeks in July and August. This year, it starts July 6th, and it will run through August 22nd, 2022. The frequency of our meetings is we have regular meetings on the first and third Tuesday of every month, a work session on the second and fourth Tuesdays, and the months with five Tuesdays, we will have a special work session that will generally focus on board and commission updates as requested by council. Our typical meeting agendas, we have a consent agenda, which we hope that all items are approved with one single motion. There are basic matters with no staff presentations prepared, and this improves the efficiency of meetings. We have routine items that are about routine matters that require basic staff presentations, and it also has second reads and adoptions of ordinances listed under routine items. I know riveting stuff. Regular items, we have in-depth items and items of high interest by the public, and then we also vote on ordinances and resolutions. And then we also vote on ordinances and resolutions. Public hearings are statutorily required. Uh, they include rezones, regional plan amendments, liquor licenses, et cetera. For our public comment and participation, the public is permitted to speak three times during a meeting and each comment is limited to three minutes. Public participation is at the beginning and the end of the meeting and is confined to the comments, to comments on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not dialogue with these speakers as there has not been proper public notice of the topic. Public comment is reserved for items that are on the agenda and council can dialogue with these speakers if desired. At this time, we have virtual and physical comment options. My specialty, the boards and commissions area, um, we did want to talk about the appointment process at a very high level right now. We are currently at 27 boards and commissions. They are typically for three-year terms, each appointment. For the application review, we recommend informal interviews with all applicants, either via email, phone, in person, however you all would like to, however you decide. We, um, suggest that you seek input from staff liaisons for the commissions. And then you seek input from the council liaison for the commission. For the council member recommendation, we do have a rotating list for the recommendations. This was created to provide an opportunity for all council members to make a recommendation to each, each commission. Uh, again, the working calendar, uh, it is located online or we email it out every Friday. Uh, it is a living document that changes daily. It is distributed every Friday with the agenda and as I said, it's posted on the city website. And now I'm going to turn the legal sphere over to our city attorney Sterling Solomon.
I'm overwhelmed by the vast audience here to see this presentation, but I'll do my best to not get nervous. And now this is, uh, it, this is, uh, like she said, a refresher. I appreciate Stacy's, um, quick presentation. While there are multiple slides that I have, I will tell you I'll move through them very quickly because a lot of them deal with what we're doing right now. This open meeting process. Some of the slides I'm going to spend a little more time on though are ones that we don't deal with as regularly, such as conflicts of interest. Or, uh, gifts and how that's not appropriate to accept any gifts. Those are some of the things, like I say, we don't address very often, but I will start with the basic and that is the charter. And, and you've all heard me say it before, that's our, that's our city's constitution in essence. That is approved by the voters and only amended by the voters and signed by the governor, by the way. So it's, it's something that, it's flagstaff's unique, um, charter to, to govern itself. It provides for a council manager form of government and council under that charter makes the policy decisions. So council appoints the city manager and the manager implements that policy and administers the city affairs, the city government, staff, works closely with staff and, and comes to you as a council, um, when it comes to actually putting the, that policy into place. And, and we'll get into that a little more here later. But council doesn't direct city staff. There's a non-interference clause in the city charter in Article 12, Section 18. And that's common to all council manager form of government charters. So the council appoints two other positions, the position that I'm in, the city attorney, as well as the city magistrate. In the charter, just so you know, it's referred to as police judge or police judges. But those are the only three positions that you appoint. The city manager does all of the other hiring, firing for all city staff and that sort of thing. Uh, council also appoints boards and commissions, as Stacy mentioned. And the city manager makes all the other hiring decisions as I indicated. So the council powers and duties are outlined in Article 2 of the charter. That's where we get into the specifics of the fact that four or more council members constitute a quorum. Because we have a total of seven on the council. And a quorum is usually, um, if we had three council members missing tonight, we would still have a quorum. You can still operate with four. But if you don't get the four here, then we don't have a meeting and I'll talk about that a little more specifically later. As the, uh, mayor, under the, the charter, it's clearly stated, the mayor is the ceremonial head of city and provides over the city, um, council meetings as the chair, and that's called out in your rules of procedure as well. As the chair, the mayor can make and second motions. That's not always the case, just so you're all aware with every, um, um, council and board. But that is the case under our Article 7, Section 2. It's very specifically drawn out there. So council meetings, um, are where all of these decisions and these formal actions take place. Their decisions or, or formal actions that create ordinances that go into our city code, really implement the policy that the council wants to put forward. And there are other ways to note that policy without making an, an official city code out of it, and that's to pass a resolution. And council does resolutions on a regular basis. So specific to our city council meetings, um, as Stacy indicated, you have your two general meetings. And then you have, and that's the first and fourth, or excuse me, first and third Tuesday of the month. And then you have work sessions as well, but we meet every Tuesday, either in a, a general meeting, a general regular meeting or a work session. Uh, you, you can also have special meetings, retreats, uh, and so on, and you're all aware of that. So under the rules of procedure, uh, you have, uh, all of those specifics laid out. But I wanted, just so you could see these slides here, they all do hearken back to a section of the charter. Other general areas of the charter, uh, are governing city divisions and, and, um, the, uh, different departments, not apartments, even though it says apartments on the slide there. Finance and taxation, contracts, elections, initiatives, referendums, recalls, franchise, public utilities and a lot of other general succession in government and amendments, that sort of thing. Council acts, like I, uh, mentioned before, by motion. There's a, a motion and a second. There's a discussion among the council. You can hear from the public. But then a call for a vote is made and, and that's when the vote is taken. Again, a majority of the council members present, uh, constitutes, um, a, you know, an approval of whatever the motion was for. So to the city code that is created by those actions. Again, those are by ordinance. We have two readings of ordinances. And they can happen only in the regular or special meetings. You can't have action in work sessions. So we're in a work session tonight. That's why there's no motion, no second and that sort of thing on, on work session items. Those, those ordinances, like I said, become codified as general ordinances in the city code. Resolutions, like I, like I mentioned, denote policy but aren't formally codified and therefore are not part of the city code. So it's, what I like to say, it's really where the nuts and bolts are of the details of city regulations. That's what the city code exists for. It governs everything from boards and commissions, nuisances, dogs at large, creations of specific duties for city divisions and sections, uh, zoning regulations, minimum wage, all of the above. And it's divided into 15 different titles, uh, that, uh, we administer the city code under. So what is the purpose? Transparency is the key of open meeting law. And when I say the purpose, I'm referring to open meeting law. This is a, a joke many of you see, have seen before, but it's a, a common, um, flaw, I will say, of, of those in governance, uh, not to be open enough, uh, where they can be. Granted, you may have areas where you need to, um, meet an executive session and we can talk about that a little more later. But for the most part, everything needs to be open and Arizona has very clear open meeting laws. Um, most of them are found in Title 38. And all meetings, uh, and legal actions of public bodies have to be open to the public. And the public needs to be able to attend those openly conducted meetings that are posted well in advance and that have agenda items that adequately explain what's going to be discussed. Legal actions have to take place in those public meetings, as I've mentioned. And the proposal or the discussion of an action has to take place here too. It can't be offsite or at another meeting with a majority of council. It all has to be in front of the public and you've all heard me say that many times, but again, that's what this is. It's a refresher tonight. Uh, only the agenda items that are posted as posted can be discussed. We've had that, um, I think, reconfirmed for us in the last few meetings, fairly clearly. But the goal again is for public access, uh, to these meetings, to these discussions, to these actions, to be maximized. Uh, transparency at, at its best. And for that reason, if there's ever a question, any, um, uncertainty is going to be resolved in the, in the vein of openness. So, um, the definition of a meeting or under open meeting law, it's, it's a gathering in person through technological devices or through technological devices of a quorum of a public body at which they discuss, propose or take legal action, including deliberations. So this was very, um, interesting over COVID. Right at the beginning of COVID, the Attorney General actually had to issue a legal opinion because the statute only read that telephonic, um, participation was possible. But there were so many, that was a little archaic. There were so many other options such as Microsoft Teams, Zoom, Skype. You have so many different ways that you can gather and meet technologically now over electronic means. And the AG's opinion at the beginning of COVID was absolutely, as long as it allows people to, and the key word in the statute is attend. When you can attend the meeting and participate, we had a, a way for people to email in at that time when we were 100% remote. Now with this hybrid option, uh, we see it at every meeting. We have public comment from those that are tuned in via Microsoft Teams and here at the dais, so, or at the, at the lectern. So it, it's great to have that option, but those aren't the only kinds of public meetings that can occur. Or I shouldn't say public. Meetings can occur over email and social media communications as well. And that's one of the pitfalls of, um, open meeting law violations. It's so easy when you're in a, a forum or something on social media or you see an email that goes to all the council members and you click reply all. Well, here's my opinion on that. We can't do that. I, I know many of you have heard me say that before, but you always, uh, want to stay away from the reply all option on anything that comes to all council members to avoid any kind of issues with open meeting law. So they also have to comply with the notice, um, agenda and minute requirements. Again, the purpose behind notice is let's let the public know, what are we going to be talking about? What are we going to be potentially taking action on? So if the public wants to show up to give their input and to provide you with their concerns, they can do so. That has to be done at a minimum 24 hours in advance. We post our agendas on Friday afternoon, but you'll often see, not often, occasionally see an amendment on a Monday, which is still well in advance. As long as it's Monday before 3 o'clock, we meet that notice requirement under the state statute. Minutes have to include the date, the time, the place, everybody that was present, uh, the general description of matters and so on. Uh, it does not have to be verbatim in the minutes. Uh, that's something that, uh, is important to remember, but that's why both Stacys are busy typing away all the time. And she's not right now because everything I'm saying is already in here, so. So what is a quorum? Right? Like I said, it's a majority of members. If there's not a quorum, we simply don't meet. Everybody go home and, uh, the meeting's going to be postponed to a later date. And that happens if, uh, four council members have to leave during a meeting and we're down to three. The meeting's over and we postpone whatever was left on the agenda to the next meeting. Executive sessions are where we get the opportunity to talk about some of the more, um, confidential or sensitive items that for various reasons, uh, may be better addressed, uh, in an executive session. There's a reason for, for example, uh, under A7 of the statute, that subsection allows you to talk about property negotiations. When you're either looking at selling or buying a piece of property as a municipality, you don't want to show your hand, technically speaking. And so you have the opportunity to talk about those negotiations or contract negotiations. There are a few items that you don't see on this list here that allow you to go into executive session, um, such as school security. That's one that's been added in the last few years. Or safety plans for a city. Uh, that's another one that's been added. There are nine under the statute, but the most commonly used, as you can see here, are personnel, legal advice, contract negotiations and property items. But that's it for executive sessions.
Pop quiz, what are the other three?
What's number three?
What are the other three?
Oh, I had that on my computer, but just in case you did that, I don't have them memorized. That's, I know where it is though.
Oh, you don't worry about it.
I can't remember, but one of them is international negotiations. And that includes negotiations with tribes on, on some things specifically, um, tribal nations. There, um, I can't remember the other one, so I won't waste your time. But anyway, we can look it up under the statute if we ever need to know. One thing that I will mention, it's important to note, under A3, uh, legal advice, that's a, a fairly common one. And it's at the beginning of every agenda. It's a catch-all. That if there's a legal question that comes up or if I hear you starting to discuss something that could present a legal issue for the city, I can recommend we go into executive session where I can give you legal advice. You can't really have, uh, discussion and give direction back to me or to other city staff on that. In fact, you can't do it at all. It's just for legal advice and then you come back out here and have your discussion. But, um, that's, uh, that's probably the most common, uh, item for which we go into executive session. And interestingly enough, one that legislation was, um, introduced on recently, it was during the last session, not this year's, to eliminate that from the executive session. Reasons to go into executive session. So a couple of the pitfalls where open meeting law violations can occur, polling individual, um, public officials. You as one council member asking three others, hey, how are you going to vote on this? We can't do that. Uh, that, that kind of gets people leaning in the direction that they're going to go. It indicates that you're reaching one specific direction on a decision perhaps or not. But polling is something that you have to be very careful with. Uh, oh, I saw a hand go up.
Councilmember McCarthy.
So Sterling, um, the open meeting law, does it apply to things that are not going to be policy decisions by council? For instance, if I post on social media that I like President Biden or I don't like President Biden, that's never going to come before council. So even though seven members might see that, uh, is that okay?
Absolutely okay.
So it's only things that are coming, that might come before council?
And the best rule of thumb is anything that is city business. Uh, if it's city business that's going to come before the council or even could possibly come before the council. Um, you've heard whisperings that somebody may even make a fair, uh, on an item. Posting on social media about that where other council members could see it could be a problem. Polling other council members about it definitely.
But if there's no chance of it being a city issue, then I'm okay. Don't worry about it.
And that's a, that's a clarifier that I'm glad you're making because it's anything that's city business. Uh, and if it's city related, you've got a pretty good chance that it could be city business. So if you have a question, and that's something I should have prefaced my presentation with, when in doubt, give me a call. Just let me know. If it's, uh, something that could potentially be city business, but it's not even in our jurisdiction and we shouldn't even be commenting on it, you may be okay, um, talking about something like that with other council members. Just, we have to be very cautious about it, so.
When in doubt, be quiet.
No, pick up the phone.
I mean, don't say anything.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kidding. But if you do have any questions, by all means, give me a call. Discussion and deliberation between less than a quorum outside a public meeting for the purpose of circumventing the open meeting law, when you know that, hey, I'm talking to two council members now and I'm going to talk to another one tomorrow, you know that's foretotal. And if you, if you're doing that intentionally, that's a problem. Even if you're doing it and it could potentially happen, I, I'm, I'm going to advise, stay away from it if you can. Uh, it's just not a good idea, um, to, to be discussing things with more than one more council member outside of a meeting for safety's sake. Again, the reason is transparency. Let's let the public hear the deliberations and, and what's going to be discussed. And again, as I mentioned, the use of email, please refrain from using reply all, uh, on those emails. And there are a lot of emails where the entire council receives a bit of information from either staff or the public. I never see any come from you to all, which is exactly what should be happening. You should not be sending emails to each other in a, in a group format. But the same goes for social media, making a post and saying, hey, any other council members, please chime in and let us know your thoughts. That, that kind of thing isn't appropriate, so. That kind of thing isn't appropriate, so. The reason, again, transparency. The public doesn't always have access, definitely, to your emails. But social media, not everybody may be following you or be on. And again, here's a little funny to illustrate the whole purpose of, let's make sure that everybody gets a chance to hear what's being discussed. It can't be at somebody's birthday party, it can't be on an email chain. It's all public business to be discussed here in front of the public, where public can see it. So, penalties. If found guilty of an open meeting law violation, the court can levy a fine up to $500 against the public official. That's the key, against the public official that perpetrated the violation, if you will. And the public official may, not may, must personally pay that fine. It can't come out of city funds. And of course, the public official is subject to removal from office. The public hearing process, and I'm getting into this because it's one that we do quite a bit, and I'll wrap back around to it in a moment when we talk more generally about rules of procedure. But the reason I get into it here is, I think we've done a better job moving forward through the public hearing process on items, but these are items of high interest with applicants that have a lot invested in what they're doing. And having a proper process is an important aspect of our meetings. So the chair can limit the amount of time for public debate, depending on circumstance and attendance, and that's right out of our rules of procedure. The chair can also remind the public, or should, that comments will be no more than three minutes, just like Ms. Fobar told us during her presentation. And those requiring interpretation or translation, they get up to five minutes. And if the chair so chooses, a person speaking for a group of 10 or more people can have up to 15 minutes, but no more than that. A recommendation that I've always made is, let's have those 10 people that are being represented by that one stand up. And then if somebody else says they're representing 10 people, the same ones that stood up for the first one can't stand up for the second one. So, just to make sure that everybody's being treated fairly. And you can't cede your three minutes to somebody else to give them six minutes. But under the public hearing process, the first step is the mayor opens the public hearing. Staff has 10 minutes or more time, as the council sees fit, to go ahead and make their presentation. Then the applicant gets the same amount of time to make their presentation. Council's questions to staff and the applicant then occur, and the public comment, again, three minutes for individual speakers who are asked to identify themselves. And the applicant's response then comes, only upon the applicant's request, doesn't have to have a response. The mayor doesn't have to call for one if they haven't requested it. And then staff's response, if any. And then council deliberates and asks any questions of the applicants and staff. It's a pretty straightforward process, one that I think we're doing a lot better at following, not that we ever did a poor job. I think the time factor, sometimes we saw some very lengthy presentations, but that's at council's consent, and that can happen. So that's fine. After the three minutes, the council can ask relevant questions to the speaker for clarification, and this is for anybody that's a public commenter. One thing on this, I will note that relevant questions, it's better to come up with an actual question about a point that they were making, rather than just saying, please continue your thought. What may happen with that is somebody might say someday, well, I didn't get the chance to continue my thought because no council member asked for my continued thoughts. It's an equity-type thing. Coming up with an actual formal question to a public commenter is always a better practice. Then the public hearing gets closed, a call for a motion, a second, and any further discussion and the vote. So that's the public hearing procedure. So I'm going to spend a little more time on some of these slides, and I have just a few examples on conflict of interest. Again, it's always good to be refreshed. It's in Title 38, Section 501 through 511, and it applies to all public officials. That includes council members, boards and commission members, all public employees, we're all public officials. And a public officer or an employee who has, or who has a relative with a substantial interest in a decision of the public agency, or in any contract, sale, purchase, or service to such public agency, has to disclose that interest, and then has to refrain from participating. And one of the keys with that is the word substantial. What's substantial versus remote? A substantial interest is anything that's non-speculative, and it's financial, pecuniary, or proprietary. And it can also be a loss, a loss that would be beneficial, for example, in some way. It's not impossible to think of a situation where that might occur. So generally, any interest that affects you or your relatives' financial, pecuniary, or proprietary interests is something you shouldn't be voting on or discussing when it comes forward for discussion of the entire council. So three questions to help you identify whether or not there's an actual or a substantial conflict of interest. Will my decision have a positive or a negative impact on my interests or that of my relatives? And when I say relatives, it's immediate family members, mother, father, but even once removed, such as an aunt or an uncle, I'm just going to tell you, stay away from it. It's not a good idea. Do I have a monetary or an ownership interest in the matter? And is my interest other than one of the designated remote interests? Is it something that is not designated under statute as remote? So, as you go through that analysis, remote interests, again, are financial, and property interests deemed to be so minor as to not trigger reporting and essentially stepping down and not participating on that item. You can still vote and participate in those items that are remote. And a couple of examples, very briefly here, remote interest examples of, that of a non-salaried officer of a nonprofit corporation. Say one of you serves on a nonprofit corporation. The example here, it's not a problem being an unpaid director of a Boys and Girls Club and voting to approve a new building project for the Boys and Girls Club when it comes before the council. You don't have any financial gain out of that. That's a remote interest. Some people may say, well, you're obviously helping the Boys and Girls Club out. Well, it's the Boys and Girls Club, it's not you personally gaining financially, or a family member gaining financially, and that's what makes it remote rather than substantial. Another one, a recipient of municipal services under the same terms and conditions of the general public. It's not a problem for a member of council to discuss and vote on new water or new sewer rates, even though that council member's going to have to pay those same rates. Kind of similar to that, a council member or a public official that is a member of a specific trade or business where there are 10 or more in that trade or business that are going to benefit from that, if there are 10 or more, then there's not a conflict of interest. And we have had this come up, in trades that don't have a whole lot of, or business owners out there operating in that trade. But if it's 10-plus, then there's not a substantial conflict of interest. A much broader example here is, it's not a problem for a P&amp;Z commissioner who's a property owner to discuss a change in zoning amendments that are going to impact numerous properties, more than 10 properties across the city. So what if you do have a substantial conflict? Refrain from voting or participating in the decision. Make the conflict of interest known officially here at the council meeting. I have a conflict on this, and I'm going to step out. And leave the dais and actually leave the room. I've had a situation in a previous jurisdiction where the council member didn't leave the room, but sat just right down here and kind of shot looks at the council members. It wasn't a good situation, and I think it's the best policy to leave the dais, leave the room. And if it's a meeting that you're on for remotely, you simply jump out of the meeting, and we'll contact you to get back in after the discussion and decision has been made. So what if you aren't sure? Ask me. Just let me know, and we'll find out. One specific point on this, if it's an official request, say one council member or commissioner asks for a legal opinion, written legal opinion, on another commissioner or a council member, that written legal opinion will be an open public document. It'll be on file with the clerk's office. That's just the way the statute reads. This one's pretty simple and straightforward.
Just a quick.
So I presume it's okay if you had a conflict of interest to listen to the discussion?
Oh, sure.
As long as, so if you were on your computer, you could listen as long as you kept your mic off and your camera off?
Right. And I wouldn't have a problem with that, as long as you're not, I will say there are other ways of communicating while an item is being discussed.
Well, I mean, obviously, if you start sending texts or something.
That's a concern.
But that, I mean, that's so blatant, obvious.
It's your choice.
If you're only listening and you're not communicating in any other way, then it's okay.
Yes, but I would still advise you to completely jump out of the meeting, just for all intents and purposes. I think that avoids any possible appearance of impropriety. That's just my advice. Of course, you can argue that listening is not participating, and that's going to be up to you in the end. All of these decisions are up to you. But that would be my advice, is to completely get out of the meeting. And we've done that, where we've had conflicts, and somebody has left the meeting and then come back in after we've finished, we've contacted them. So, again, if you're not sure, just give me a call. Let me know. Back to the next one, gifts and bribes. It's never a good idea to use an official position to secure or accept any valuable thing or benefit that would not ordinarily accrue to you in the performance of your official duties. Same for boards and commissioners. This one's a no-brainer, but we have to put it out there. And I will say, it can be very small things, a gift card. Just say thanks, but no thanks. That's my advice. You just want to stay away from the appearance of impropriety in every way. Public perception, sorry?
It's me again. I'm your nuisance.
Oh, no, you're not.
Well, when I was an engineer, our policy was, if you can eat it, it's okay. In other words, if somebody wants to buy you lunch, I'll have to admit, there's been many times where I've met with people and said, no, I'm buying my own lunch. But just for the sake of discussion, I mean, if you met at McDonald's and he bought you a $1 hamburger, is that okay?
I think, again, this slide right here is on public perception, sorry, public perception and the appearance of a conflict. That's ultimately your call, if it's de minimis or something like that. I still advise against any of it. And I'm very conservative in my advice, right? You know, I want to make sure I'm stating that upfront.
I don't have any argument with you. I just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. So, in that decision-making process, just consider, is there sufficient appearance that your continued participation, and this is back to the general conflict of interest, would harm your credibility or the credibility of the council? Is the accusation reasonably grounded? And on the flip side, is there something that the person making the accusation against you stands to gain from having you step away from it? If it's a remote conflict, and you really could participate, and somebody you think may not want you to for some reason, there's just a lot of analysis to go into it, and I'm always happy to discuss that with you. What if you do actually declare a conflict, so, or sorry, what if you do not actually declare a substantial conflict? Contracts are voidable. If a decision was made to approve a contract that you had a conflict on, that can be voided. Affected persons, somebody that lost out on the award of a contract, can sue. And the court can assess attorney fees and costs against both the city and you personally. So, again, just let us know, and we can walk you through to make sure we're safe on those. What if I do not declare a conflict of substantial, a substantial conflict, again? Some more issues, forfeiture of office, and yes, there are potential criminal penalties as well for serious knowing and intentional violations of the conflict of interest law. That can be a felony, and neglect or being reckless in violating the conflict of interest law. And those get to state of mind, and you know, that would be a very intense analysis by whoever would be prosecuting that. Again, the best thing, just stay away from it. So, moving quickly through the rules of procedure, council under the Charter, Section 14 of Article 2, can determine its own rules of procedure, has done so. In fact, the most recent update to those rules happened last November. And just really quickly going through those, those conflict of interest statutes in state law are incorporated in our rules of procedure under Rule 2. Rule 3 sets forth the specific times and dates of those open meetings we were talking about. Rule 4 gives instructions on the preparation of the agenda that Stacy was talking about earlier. And 4.02 and 4.03 govern the fair process, and I'm getting a little more into detail here because not all of us understand the fair process. I demonstrated that very well tonight, didn't I? The definition of a fair, it's a future agenda item request. It's an acronym. It's raised either with the city manager, you can send him an email, have a conversation with Greg, and say, hey, I've got an item I want to put on as a fair, or you can bring it up during to from at the end of a council meeting. It's then placed on an agenda for the rest of the council to consider, and if two are willing to support your request, then it's placed into the queue that we were talking about. And it stays in that queue until it comes up in chronological order, or it can be reordered, we found out tonight, if the council wants to do that. The work session where that fair, oh, one quick note, there is a portion under the rule that says, in that window of time between three council members saying, yes, let's move this forward, and it coming to an agenda, eight hours of staff time can be put into it. And I think this was put in place because we had some fairs that were requiring a very vast amount of staff time. And I've talked to Greg about this, and leadership and extended leadership this week. Eight hours is what it says in the rule, but we want to get you the sufficient information. We just can't spend a ton of time on one specific fair. At the work session where the fair is actually discussed, and some staff time has gone into it, four-plus members of council have to actually say, okay, I move this forward for actual consideration as a regular agenda item. So also, under Rule 4.03, removal of a fair is possible. If it hasn't come before the council at all, the council member that asked for it can just pull it. It's pretty simple. If it's, another council member wants to retain the item, however, the city council or the city manager sends an email saying, council member Sally wants to remove this fair, does anybody else want to support it? If it gets no support, it's removed. And then once on the agenda, the request to remove has to happen here at the public meeting. So Rule 5 governs the order of business, which you as a council discuss and decide on various items. That includes the consent and the routine and the public hearing that we talked about, those portions of the agenda. Rule 6 is where the mayor is designated as the chair of the council. It's also where the vice mayor is designated as the person who received the highest number of votes in the last election, and you used this most recently with Vice Mayor Sweet, when Vice Mayor Daggett stepped down. So, that moves us to Rule Number 7, and that involves order and decorum here in the meetings. There's some case law that governs this as well when it comes to disruption of the public at the meetings. With remote access, it wasn't as much of an issue because Stacy would just mute people. And, no, I'm just kidding. That never happened. I think she only muted Greg. Greg always accuses her of muting him. Rule 8 is the process for appeal from a decision of the chair. This is a very specific rule where the chair actually has to state some specific language. If a motion is made to appeal the decision of the chair, the chair says, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? If a majority of the council members vote aye, the ruling of the chair is sustained. Otherwise, it's overruled. There's no discussion on this either. So that one's fairly straightforward. Rule 9 governs the public participation. We've talked about that already. And Rule 10 gives specific And Rule Ten gives specific details on the motions, amendments to motions, withdrawal of motions, et cetera. You ought to read through it all, just every once in a while. It's a good thing. You find new things all the time, like I said, like I did tonight. We will discuss, obviously, more in one-on-one settings if you have any questions, but a lot of it we learn as we go in real time during these meetings. So, there are a bunch of miscellaneous items under Rule Eleven, prior staff and review and approval of agenda items, the 9:30 rule, if we ever get to 9:30, we don't pick up another agenda item after that unless there's a motion made to continue the agenda as posted. We adhere loosely to Robert's Rules of Order, but when there is a question, generally we refer to, to Robert's Rules. For example, on a motion to reconsider, we do have some rules in our rules of procedure, but Robert's Rules really provides the, the backdrop for that where most of these rules come from. Citizen petitions, we talked about tonight, how they come similar to a fair, have to be heard within 30 days. And then provisions on photography, video and security. That rule basically says anybody photographing the council or videoing the meeting has to be behind the lectern. The reason for that, the language, we can be at another off-site meeting and there's always or typically going to be a lectern, and we can just say you have to be behind that. It's to provide safety there. So a very high-level pass over the policy sphere, which is your sphere, the role, your role as a council is that policymaking. There's obviously engagement with staff to make that happen. How much can you afford, allocation of resources, delegation of duties, responding to citizens, state and federal priorities. You set your legislative priorities all the time and work with the state legislature to try and get things through that we need. Meeting protocol, time management, CCRs, those are city council reports and fairs. That's how you engage with, with staff and, and move forward with the policies that you wish to implement as council. In that role of setting policy, you can approach it a couple, a couple of different ways, either reactively or proactively. Again, the legislative priorities. The most direct you can do is the passing of your ordinances that go into effect in your city code here in Flagstaff and resolutions that call out your policy. And of course, the formulation of community priorities. So, that was a very high-level pass over the policy sphere. I don't have anything further to present tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not now, whenever you have a question come up.
Thank you, City Attorney. Any questions? All right. Thank you much.
Thank you.
We're down to Agenda Item Number Eleven, public participation. And we do have one public participant, so please patch them through.
Mayor and Council, I have Celia. Celia, you may go ahead and unmute yourself and address Mayor and Council.
Hi, Mayor and Council, it's me again. My comment was received during the wrong agenda item, so I apologize for that. And so I'm back again. And I will mention that I, I'm interested in the process for receiving, for you receiving public comment on the proposed Fourth Amendment to the Timber Sky Development Agreement, and that it's my understanding that it will be made public this coming Friday when the agenda for the council meeting is published. And I don't think three days over a holiday weekend is long enough for the public, especially since you've declared a housing emergency. So I hope you will extend the date for one week so that the public has time to review it and offer you comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Celia. All right. And I do believe that was just the, we just had the one. Okay. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item Number Twelve, informational items, two from Mayor, Council and City Manager, future agenda item requests. Let's, let's go for roll call order this go-around. So Vice Mayor Sweet.
Thank you. Tomorrow night, I am attending the Taste of Flagstaff. It benefits victim witness services. It is from six to nine out at the Wiseman Aviation at the airport. And then on Thursday, I am touring the Carpenter's Union facility in Phoenix, and I'm excited to see what they're up to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Assam?
Nothing tonight. I would like to remind everybody, I'd probably be missing the meeting on June 7th, and keep that in mind if you're considering moving the Timber Sky discussion back one week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember House?
Thank you. Last week I had an opportunity to meet and greet with the team at Elevate Pre-K, which was a great conversation, just chatting with them about the work that they're doing. I also had an opportunity to tour the Haven Montessori School. And today I had the opportunity to do a public works tour through the museum flood area, which besides being informative and educational, I think most of all it was just very inspiring and, and hero work that those guys are doing up there and seeing the top-down work that they're doing to improve and mitigate future flooding throughout those neighborhoods. Tomorrow, I will be touring High Country Humane, and I'm excited to revisit that facility. I am committed to not falling in love with another animal, but I make absolutely no promises. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, the only thing I was going to mention, but I actually mentioned it before, is that I had a meeting with the Director of the National Park Services last week, which was interesting. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Councilmember Solis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be attending the fundraiser for the Victim Witness Center, which is the Taste of Flagstaff. And I am humbled to share that yesterday at the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, yours truly was elected as Vice Chair. And next week we will have Metro Plan Meeting. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Solis.
I bring 2.6 million for Lone Tree.
Thank you. Thank you for your advocacy. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Councilmember Solis. That's incredible. So this past Monday, yesterday, wow, feels like a long time ago, I had a site visit at the Locket Port Street intersection. I was just out there and I invited the public to join me. It was, it was a good experience. It was great to see the traffic flow over the course of an hour. It, it really sinks in after about 20 minutes, you really get a feel for the intersection. But a, a site visit, I think is really worthwhile, and I know staff is working on something. So I look forward to whatever it is we decide to do, but I, I, it was, it was a nice experience, and we'll talk more about that next week. In regards to the public commenter, Celia's comment about the date, I'm open. I, I guess, you know, Councilmember Assam, I heard you say that you weren't, you weren't going to be here if we pushed it back that week, and I do think it's important that you're here for that conversation. So Mayor, I'll, I'll let you and the team figure out what we should do about that, but whatever makes sense. Tomorrow, I'm going to be attending a virtual justice briefing about responding to homelessness, effective strategies for law enforcement and community partners. And I look forward to learning what they have to provide. And then lastly, this Thursday, I'm co-hosting a town hall at Pine Forest School from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and it's posted for a quorum in case a quorum were to show up. But I'm just going to facilitate a nice discussion about people's comments, concerns, whatever it might be in regards to that roundabout. And so, yeah, looking forward to that. Good meeting today, everybody. That was a long meeting, and I, I thought we covered a lot of good ground. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. And yes, to address the commenters, Celia's comments just a minute ago, I also don't feel comfortable with that on the agenda next week. Since it is a work session, though, we can kick it two weeks and have it on the next work session, rather, preferably, but if, I mean, councils and, I mean, all, I can kick it too in the meeting on Tuesday if necessary. So, but I really think that the public has a right and should have the, I mean, should know the plan. I was, I was a little dismayed last time when we didn't even know what the offer or what they were actually asking until they were standing at the podium. That was not fair for us to be able to prepare as council, to talk to our constituents, and we need that extra time for something as important as this development agreement. So, and that's, that's one thing I wanted to talk about tonight, or the two from. So with that, I will, Councilmember McCarthy?
Yeah, I just want to back you up on the idea that this is a pretty complicated development agreement, and I don't know what they have in mind for changes. So it would be good to get that a week or two ahead of the night that we literally need to talk about it. So I agree with you. Thank you.
And we do have legal advice discussion and executive section, session next week on Tuesday as well, and I would also like time to process any legal information on my own behalf to make sure we're moving ahead accordingly. City Manager?
Thank you. To clarify then, and I'm making note here that Dan Falk in the chat column has stated that the DA item is an introduction next week and not slated for action until June 21st. Just wanted to make that clarification. Is council still desirous of putting it two weeks down the road to work session to have that introduction?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like the extra time. This is, this is a big one, and we need time to digest the DA, in my mind. And two, so two-week delay.
A two-week delay. Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Shimonie, I just wanted to also clarify, I don't believe staff is working on any off-site meeting regarding the Fourth Street Intersection, the roundabouts. We certainly would, would be glad to accommodate in any way, but we would need council direction. This pretty much goes to the presentation that you just had from your city attorney, that it takes more than one councilperson to direct staff to orchestrate a meeting or do anything really that is outside the course of usual duties. I want to be respectful to all councilpeople, including Councilmember Shimonie, but if there's thinking that staff is doing something, I just want to clarify and say, well, not until we hear from a majority of council.
Thank you, City Manager. And why don't you shoot us an email and get the straw poll, so we're not having a big conversation up here on this one. Out of respect for Sterling.
So just, just one thing, from a legal perspective, if any council member wants to hold a meeting or an event themselves and do that of their own accord, they're obviously able to do that. It's not something that is an official city meeting. It's not something that involves city staff, as the city manager just mentioned. But if, taking a straw poll, that kind of thing is also an issue with open meeting law as far as trying to, to determine whether or not council wants to hold that meeting. It should be posted on an agenda and considered on an agenda whether or not council wants to hold a meeting like that.
And I think Councilmember Shimonie has a question.
Yes, Councilmember Shimonie?
If it's appropriate. So, City Manager, we've, we've had site visits in the past to other projects. I guess my question for you and for the group really is, how do we orchestrate that in a timely manner that doesn't go through the fair process? If there's a majority of support?
Well, I think this is already agendized for next Tuesday, and that could be part of the discussion on the May 31st meeting where it is scheduled, the Fourth Street-Cedar Avenue Locket Round Road Roundabout Discussion. So I don't think it has to go through the fair, but we can pick it up on Tuesday.
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, you know, council always has the prerogative, or in most cases, to continue an item, and if that continuance was subject to allowing for a site visit to occur, you know, you can continue an item to, and orchestrate a meeting offsite. I think you're going to want to have legal counsel about the quorum issue. If, you know, that meeting can, can be done a couple of ways, but I, I think Sterling, knowing Sterling well enough, would prefer that quorums are not met out of the dais, therefore, you know, site visits would probably be broken up into two visits.
You could either do that or just post it as a formal meeting, which, which was done with respect to Lone Tree overpass.
Yeah. You would have a couple of options, and to the point you just, and thank you, Sterling. To the point you just made, Mayor, next week, council doesn't have to necessarily render an outcome or a decision, but could say, more information is sought, we would like to have a site visit to further the discussion. That's just one avenue on, on getting there. Okay.
And Mayor, you've, you've appropriately identified that that can all happen during the discussion next week when it's properly, you know, posted and the public knows we're talking about that. That's, that's where this discussion should happen.
Excellent. Well, then we will take it a stride at a time here. All right, with that, unless anything else, I do believe we are adjourned.
Thank you.